Good evening, welcome to the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals. First on our agenda are the minutes from the October nineteenth hearing. Has everybody reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
Is there any comments? All in favor say aye.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
I'll second those.
Yeah. Okay. I want to introduce Valentina Elzon, our new member of the ZBA, welcome.
Thank you.
Want to describe anything of your background and why you want to serve and welcome?
Yeah, do we have time?
No.
I'm a Needham resident since twenty twelve. I'm an attorney and excited to join this board.
Great, welcome. Look forward to having you. Okay. We have twenty four Webster Street. We have already started to circulate and sign that decision was done. Next on the agenda are the rules changed? We already did, we voted to approve the decision at the last hearing, this is just
The document.
No, we've already approved, we're just signing.
All right.
Okay. Now we have the motion to amend our rules that we brought up at the last hearing and that we advised that we could read the rules, discuss the rules, but we would have to wait a month before we could vote on. And the motion to amend the rules to reflect more accurately general law chapter forty eight section sixteen on the withdrawal of petitions for variance or applications for special permits. And amending Article five, section two. So the old Article five, section two withdrawal will be replaced with the following. An application may be withdrawn by notice and writing to the clerk at any time prior to the hearing by the board. That's the difference, prior to the hearing, prior to the publication of the notice of hearing, an application will be withdrawn without prejudice. Thereafter, a petition or application may be withdrawn only with the consent of the board, which will determine whether the withdrawal is without prejudice to filing at any time or with prejudice subjecting the applicant to the provisions of section four below. Is there a motion to amend the rules of the zoning board of appeals as stated and written?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the three of us have voted on this, you're not a voting member on this petition, so we will designate who's voting in that one. Next on the agenda is thirty Wilshire Park, which was continued from the last hearing. We have a request from the applicant to again continue the hearing until December fourteenth. Is there a motion to approve the additional continuance to December fourteenth?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that'll be on at seven thirty on December fourteenth, and I think this would be the last continuance, Peter had reflected that in the record last time. This is the second continuous, I think this is it. Okay? The next hearing is scheduled for seven forty-five. And unfortunately, we can't start that hearing until seven forty-five. So we're going to take a break until seven forty-three and then rezone. Okay, so we're adjourned until seven forty-three.
So we're coming back from recess, good evening, my name is Howard Goldman, I'm here tonight from the Needham Zoning Board along with Peter Friedenberg and our new member Valentina Elzon, who the three members will be sitting in on this panel tonight. So it's now seven forty-five, we can get started. We're here tonight on the the appeal for the regarding the six eighty-eight Central Ave matter, and I'll read the official pronouncement that Holly Clark, Greg Garrish, and Robert D'Amici, Matthew and Nicole Heidman, Carol Johansson, Anne and Peter Lyons, and Eileen Sullivan are applicants tonight. They've applied to the board for an appeal of the building inspector's decision of a building permit PC two three ten zero seven nine issued to Matt Borelli and the Needham Enterprise LLC dated September nineteen two thousand twenty-three for the construction of a childcare facility. The appeal of this building inspector's decision tonight concludes that the building permit, this is the allegation by the applicant, that the building plans filed do not demonstrate that the construction alteration or use as proposed complies with the zoning bylaws as limited by the Dover amendment, chapter forty-eight, section three. The subject property, as I said earlier, is located at sixteen eighty-eight Central Street Needham in the single residence A district. So we have a busy night tonight, we appreciate everyone being here, I know there's a lot of concerned people, both for and against the the appeal. So we'll get started tonight and we'll get as far as we can, but it could be that we end up coming back the following meeting, which is the December meeting on December fourteenth, if we don't make our way through this, there's a lot of materials, a lot of people want to be heard both in this room as well as on Zoom tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the appellant's lawyer, Dylan Sanders, Mr. Sanders, please, if you can come forward. Please. Sir, if you can identify yourself, please.
I will give so. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dylan Sanders from the law firm of Beverage and Diamond, and I do represent seven families and the nine appellants residents that you've just identified who have brought this appeal of a building permit issued for a commercial daycare facility at sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue in their neighborhood. All of my clients, all of the appellants, the applicants are direct abutters to the project or neighbors of the project who will be uniquely aggrieved and uniquely impacted if the project proceeds as currently permitted. Many are here tonight and you will hear from some of them, some are perhaps on Zoom, a couple could not be here due to other prior family or work engagements. Let me make one thing clear. These neighbors recognize and indeed have always recognized that as a matter of law, a daycare center can be built in this residential neighborhood. Their objections go to this particular permit to the design, siding, and bulk of the project in their residential neighborhood, concerns that the Dover amendment expressly allows the town to regulate. Proving this point, that the neighbors acknowledge that a daycare center can be built in this residential neighborhood. The neighbors did not object, did not appeal the planning board's decision approving the project. They had concerns with it, but on balance, they elected not to appeal because on balance, the project as conditioned under the site plan review decision conditioned the projects in a way that they felt adequately protected the neighborhood. They were not happy with the site plan, but on balance, they believed it protected their neighborhood. They only sought to intervene in the land court proceeding when the developer appealed. The developer appealed that site plan review decision and challenged the all of the conditions in that site plan review. We provided you with extensive documentation of our appeal, hopefully, but I see it wasn't primarily virtually, I am an environmental lawyer after all, so I'm sensitive to that fact. But my purpose here tonight is not to go through this by case by point by point, but to provide you for a framework for the neighbors' arguments. Again, you will hear on many of the facts from some of them, from their own mouths. The first point, the first point is a legal one and a simple one. The building permit is premature because the site plan review decision is still the subject of a judicial appeal. The neighbors are currently appealing from the land court, their appeal is pending in the appeals court. The appeals court has said that a potential outcome of their the abutters' appeal may be a retrial of concerning the site plan review decision. Another outcome may be an appeal of the land court's decision that the town, the land court had decided that the town in this case used a special permit mechanism, we don't agree that that's what the town did, but that's what the land court found. So one of the outcomes here may be an appeal of that land court decision that the town used a special permit mechanism and that the town was not allowed to do so under the Dover amendment. That is still a live issue. My clients will certainly be pursuing those issues in their appeal. Thus, though, the planning board chose not to appeal the land court decision for reasons of its own. The site plan review decision is still the subject of judicial of a judicial appeal and the building permit we submit is therefore premature. The second element framing the neighbor's argument is that the project does not comply with the zoning, the town zoning bylaws and is thus not entitled to a building permit. To begin with, as you know, it does not have site plan approval from the planning board. Let me again be very clear. We acknowledge that the land court has ruled that the town could not require whatever process the court found that the town used here to review the project. Whether you consider that a special permit as the land court did, or as we do, site plan review, we acknowledge that the land court found end of story in the land court that that process was not permitted under the Dover amendment. We do not expect the ZBA in hearing this appeal to fly to flaunt the land court. We are not here asking you to do that. We do ask the ZBA to recognize that the project does not in fact have site plan approval, site plan approval from the planning board as the bylaw requires. And if the ZBA believes that the land court has tied its hands, and if the board finds it cannot revoke the permit on the basis that it has does that the project does not have an approved site plan, or the ZBA to say it much, say as much in your decision. The neighbors are certainly not waving their core argument that site plan review is required here and that it does, the project does not have site plan review. The land court itself has made crystal clear that it understands the abutters are not bound by the land court's judgment, which is why we are making the arguments here and we will continue to make these arguments. It is only through site plan review process that some accommodations with the neighborhood can be reached that balances the protected use and daycare centers are protected uses under the Dover amendment with the interests of the town and the neighborhood that the Dover amendment also allows the town to protect. Seems to me the land court in annuling the decision and stopping there throughout the baby with the bathwater. If the board feels its hands are tied by the land court, the building inspector and this board are nevertheless bound to apply the town's bylaws and zoning bylaw in particular. The land court said in its judgment that the developer may apply for a building permit, not that it was entitled to a building permit. The neighbors submit that the plans on file do not show that the project complies with the zoning bylaw. To begin with, and perhaps most notably, the proposed plan we submit violates the zoning bylaw because it proposes two non-residential buildings on the same lot in violation of section three point two point one. The planning board in its decision found that the project violated section three point two point one. And while the land court annulled its decision in the entirety, it did not reach this particular point. The fact, the fact still stands that the project is proposing two non-residential buildings on the lot in violation of section three point two point one. The requirement should be enforced that the applicant be required to remove what is referred to as the barn, the fourth forty-eight hundred square foot barn. The developer argues that this requirement in section three point two point one is precluded by the Dover amendment. But this is precisely the sort of regulation that the Dover amendment allows. It's a regulation on building footprint on the bulk of a project. The the regulation is valid on its face because it is a facially neutral regulation of bulk and building footprint, and I would argue also open space, which the Dover amendment expressly permits. And it is valid as applied because it does not nullify the protected use. Indeed, the developer and the applicant have have never contended that the removal of the barn would nullify or impede the protected use. It furthers legitimate municipal interest on the Dover amendment in that it preserves the character of the neighborhood. The developer has suggested that an appeals court case called Petrucci has already already decided this issue. Petrucci did nothing of the kind, and I invite the board to read Petrucci. Petrucci concerned a developer's proposal to use a barn that was accessory to a residential structure as the daycare center while keeping a residence on the same lot. Thus, the argument was the two uses violated a law, a town bylaw in that town that prohibited two primary uses on the same lot. This prohibit, this prohibited prohibition, as the appeals court found in Petrucci, violated the Dover amendment, which bars any prohibition on the use of primary structures for daycares. The issue here in contrast is a bylaw prohibiting more than one building on the same lot. It is a bylaw focusing on the number of structures, not the use of those structures. Under the date, under the bylaw, the daycare center can be operated without the barn. It is just that the developer is not entitled to keep a second structure on the lot. The developers council points out that the temple next door operates both a church and a daycare, but the developers' argument proves my point. The temple is doing so in a single building. The barn does not qualify for an accessory structure for the reasons the planning board has already found, including the fact that accessory buildings are not permitted, are only permitted access as accessories to residential uses in this district. We also filed our appeal claiming that the town's bylaw required submission of a stormwater management and erosion control plan and that there was none. We acknowledge that a stormwater management plan is now on file. We further acknowledge that just last Thursday, after the building permit had been issued and this appeal had been commenced, an erosion erosion control plan was was filed, but after the building permit had been issued. We do note, however, that the stormwater management plan and the erosion plan are each only a single cursory document. We submit that the intent of the bylaw is to require much more, by the way, specifically of an erosion control plan, which is needed, given the history of the use of this lot to protect not only the the future uses as a daycare center. uh, the 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 future uses uh as a daycare center, but during construction, the neighborhood from potential runoff of potential hazardous substances. Landscaping. The submitted plans do not comply with zoning bylaw section four point two point fourteen requiring screening for institutional uses in this residential district. This section requires for institutional uses in a residential neighborhood a landscape transition and screen area along those segments of the lot design that will screen the institutional uses from buildings located on abutting lots. The transition area must be at least twenty-five feet wide, measured at its narrow it narrowest point. No landscape plan has been filed that meets the requirements of section four point two point fourteen. The developer and applicant's principal argument is landscaping is not appropriate area of local regulation under the Dover amendment. I submit that the law is otherwise. The landscape plan is a permissible regulation. The Dover amendment expressly allows regulation concerning open space and bulk. That is what the transition plan regulates. One of the central purposes of open space and landscaping is to mitigate the bulk of a building, the impact of the bulk of the building on adjacent uses. Furthermore, it is a reasonable regulation required by the bylaw that would not nullify the protected use, would not nullify uh, its use as a daycare center. The landscaping plan was not included in the permit application filings. If the applicant intends to adhere to the design review board suggestions on landscaping, that plan should be part of the application filings for the building permit. And if approved, should be form part of the building permit itself. Doing so will give everyone certainty, will make sure the requirements are enforceable and eliminate any future dispute over what was required and whether that requirement has been met. Let me close by discussing conditions that were part of the site plan review decisions that the neighbors believe are critical to protecting the neighborhood. Environmental issues. You're going to hear from some of the neighborhoods and others about those critical environmental issues. But what you will hear is that and what we've given you is that the well documented history of the site suggests potential releases of hazardous materials. The site's been used as an excavation company, as a refuge yards, as a site for building race cars and repairing race cars. It's been used by a landscaping. The proposed use as a daycare center. Uh, as an environmental lawyer, I am extremely surprised that the applicant is resisting soil testing of the site, given the history and given what they want to use the site for. The Board of Health obviously thought these issues were serious enough to require an assessment by an independent LSP, that is, an independent licensed site professional, someone certified by the state to assess potential environmental contamination. If the building permit is not revoked, these conditions in the original site plan review decision should be restored as a condition of the building permit. Traffic. Section five point three point five of the zoning bylaw requires projects to provide for traffic safety. The site plan review decision that is now but annulled contains several conditions to ensure traffic safety, including no on-street parking, the hiring of police details at critical times, and further traffic study after a period of time. All reasonable conditions, all conditions that uh many, I'm sure you've seen many projects subjected to. If the building permit is not revoked, the appealing neighbors request that the original traffic mitigation measures from the site plan review decisions be incorporated into the amended building permit. In fact, it's my understanding, I didn't live through this, but many of the people in this room did, that during the site plan review decision, the developer actually acquiesced and agreed to those traffic mitigation provisions. So it should be a simple matter of incorporating them now in a revised building permit. Lighting. Lighting mitigations are obviously, lighting mitigation measures are obviously critical when citing an institutional and commercial use in a predominantly residential neighborhood. These include measures to control or mitigate off-site glare and light spillover. Such measures are required by section five point three point four of the bylaw. This is another instance where by annuling the decision, in total, the court has thrown out the good with the bad, what it perceived as the bad. The appealing residents request that the light mitigation measures from the site plan review decision be reincorporated in an amended building permit if that permit is nevertheless upheld. In closing, let me say this. As approved, the plan permanently changes the character of the neighborhood for the worse. The approved project has no plan to mitigate the hundreds of additional vehicle trips that will spill into on one of the most congested roads in town. It is only a one-page cursory soil erosion mitigation plan and no condition to address the risk of environmental contamination on the lot, both during construction and afterwards. It allows the smallest setback of any building on this section of Central Avenue and even permits a second non-residential building on this lot in violation of the zoning bylaw. The zoning, the building inspector issued the permit in reliance on a court order that is, as I say, under appeal and is not final. Thank you, and you will be hearing um from additional appellants or you'll be hearing from the appellants themselves later tonight. I thank you again for your attention and your careful consideration of this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Before you step down, does anyone on the board have questions or comments to Mr. Sanders?
I'd like to hear more first.
No, no, I heard him.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I will be here.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so the next we invite the the town inspector, Joe Prandak, to come up and and give his perspective on this uh, in support of the issuance of a building permit. Good evening, Mr. Inspector.
Good evening, the community. The community, uh, Joe Prandak, building commissioner. So, uh, we did in fact issue uh the building permit for the childcare center uh at sixteen eighty-eight uh, Central Avenue. And I would just, I would respond to um Attorney Sanders' uh uh, points as best I can. It's the town's opinion or it's the 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 opinion of this office with the advice of town council that um the matter of the appeal by the neighbors does not preclude the town from issuing the building permit. Uh, the building permit has issued. The developer is free to go ahead and build that building at his own risk. And should the neighbors prevail on that appeal, uh, that may that that may put his development uh in a precarious position, but uh certainly not the town's responsibility here. When the, uh, as far as not complying with the the zoning bylaw, um, they actually did go through the site plan review process that was appealed and it was annulled by the by the judge. Um, and the judge, I I think, in my opinion, uh, the judge felt that although it was a site plan review process, um they traveled into the area of a special permit uh uh conditions that would be typical of a special permit uh more than allow so through that site plan review process. But they, but the bottom line is they had site plan approval. Uh, it was appealed to court and that site plan approval was annulled. The uh, the two, uh, the non-residential structures on the on the property, um, the barn, um, the applicant uh has been made aware that the barn can only be accessory to the daycare center. Certainly, uh, they could use the barn to store uh snow blowers, landscaping equipment, anything that would be used to maintain the property. Um, but there is potential there as well, uh, you know, perhaps down the road, they could um uh, there could be an indoor play area for the daycare center. There are plenty of uses that are available that would be clearly accessory and uh to the daycare center. The daycare, the childcare center is a permitted use in 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 the district because of the Dover amendment. Uh, therefore, they're entitled to an accessory use. So there is nothing that limits the size of an accessory structure. Uh, and uh they cannot use it for anything other than an accessory use to the daycare center. Um, so if they were to do that, uh, they would be in violation and this office has uh, has remedies available to it uh to cure that.
So let me ask a question. So so the building permit that issued, is there a restriction that was imposed regarding uh, uh, the accessory use uh only in connection with daycare? Is that something a condition in the permit?
It is not a condition, no.
Does the barn need a seat?
Only until they did make a decision on what they would use it for, if they if they come to it, well.
Doesn't have a seat, no.
Uh, it does not.
So it can't be occupied by people or can't be used for anything until it gets a seat?
My office typically would not have a problem with them using it to store, like we mentioned, I mentioned the first time, landscaping equipment, snow blowers, that type of thing. They certainly couldn't store that in the daycare center.
They don't need a seat. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what's the mechanism by which you're you're limiting the use of the barn?
At this point, it's only been a verbal conversation with the with with the developer.
Okay, so so if there should be a problem a year down the road, on what basis would you be able to go back and say you can't do this because it's limited to childcare?
Because I have the authority to cite them for violating the zoning bylaw.
And what would they be violating in your mind?
If if they, if they were to use it, for example, uh, given that we, the fact that we know the developer uh is a contractor as well, if if he, for example, started storing his construction equipment there, uh, that would be a violation of the bylaw. That would be bringing another uh that would be bringing a a commercial non-permitted use into that residential district and we could cite him for that and there was a process by which we could.
Because it would no longer be an accessory use to the child.
Correct, yes. The stormwater management plan, uh, the stormwater bylaw actually is not part of the zoning bylaw. It's a separate general bylaw. Um, they did submit a a drainage plan, uh, which um shows there is significant onsite underground storage for the uh, parking area and the and the hard surface of the building itself, that the water will be stored on the property. Uh, these are typically based on what we call a twenty-five-year storm. And this is calculated by an engineer. Uh, and the the primary purpose of the stormwater bylaw is to protect the discharge that eventually goes into our storm drain system and then into the Child River. And that's was mandated by by federal law, the Clean Water Act. It is, although we're we're seeking to revise that, uh, it it the primary intention of that right now is not necessarily the protection of adjoining properties. Um, but at the same time, uh, if you look at the drainage plan or as as I have, certainly there will, there is no runoff to the adjacent properties that will be caused by the development of this property as a childcare center with its parking lot and driveways. The landscape uh plan is simply not required. Um, it is not tied to open space. Um, it is not permitted uh by the Dover amendment. We look at the Dover amendment as limitations, just as it says in the title of chapter forty-eight, there are limitations on zoning bylaws and it only allows and I have to read it and I shouldn't know it.
You're you're referencing the the landscape uh requirements under the bylaw?
The landscape requirements under the bylaw are not permitted by the Dover amendment.
No, no, that's what you said, but you were looking through your notes regarding the particular bylaw regarding landscaping.
No, I was looking for the Dover amendment, uh, which which uh tells us what we can.
It's the third paragraph of the section.
Yeah, so it concerning Vulcan height of structures, the outside lot area setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements. Open space uh in 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 my entire career has never been tied to landscaping. Landscaping is definitely all together. Uh, so what would open space be, guys? Open space is simply non-built.
So I think the the applicant council had referenced that the open space, in his view anyway, uh, would include landscape plans with appropriate setback and so on. Screening, for example, I think you mentioned.
Right.
And your position is that 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 doesn't include that?
Correct, disagree with that completely.
And and is there some basis for that?
The the basis is uh the chapter forty-eight, the Dover amendment.
Well, certainly, you know, as I'm reading the Dover amendment, we all are reading section three together. Uh, it's taking uh uh, it clearly permits the daycare use.
Yes.
And yet it provides, however, that such land and structures may be subject to reasonable regulation concerning those items that you mentioned. That's what, in in particular, I was inquiring about open space uh, and just trying to to flush that out a little bit. We heard the applicant's position that landscaping was under open space and you're taking a position that it's not. I just was wondering your reasoning for the position that landscaping would not be a part of open space.
Uh, we again, open space is simply that. It is open space. Um, it is space that is not allowed to be to contain a building. Uh, it's it's uh, I guess I really don't know how else to put it.
I think what what Howard might be having trouble with is in in the list, I had sort of the same problem. It it talks about things that can be regulated, our yard sizes, which obviously affect open space.
Right.
Uh, then they take off open space as a separate category and then they take off building coverage, which is kind of the reciprocal of open space. So if you, if they're saying that you can regulate building coverage, which we do in the item and which you determine the the plan complies with our our zoning.
Correct.
What does, what would an open space requirement be that would add to that and not simply duplicate, using that famous judicial maxim that every word has meaning, right?
Yeah.
All right, so what by including open space, I guess what we're struggling with is what they were intending to say the town could regulate in addition to regulating building coverage. Building coverage will tell you how much footprint you can have on the site.
Correct.
Therefore, everything else is open.
Yes.
And and I guess what we're wondering is does open space include more than just what percentage of the lawn needs to be undeveloped? Does it, does it say anything about what has to happen in the open space, I guess?
I I don't believe it does.
I don't think it does. Yeah, and I'm not saying that's wrong. I just wanted to know how you interpret it.
Yep. I'd be happy to take a quick look and see if there's possibly a definition of the bylaw. I didn't bring a copy with me, though.
Sure. That's a good question. There never is when you're looking for.
Nope, nope. At least it's not alphabetical.
So it doesn't appear, uh, with your purview, uh, that the bylaw defines what open space means?
The bylaw does appears to not define what open space means, yes.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I just had a few questions, but please continue with your with your thoughts regarding the approval of this building permit.
Um, so w- we felt that landscaping was not required. Um, as far as the um the uh the claim that that there there may be um some sort of contamination on the site. Uh, it was my understanding that was that that's been reviewed by the health department and although they may have asked that in the in the to be conditioned in the site plan approval, which was annulled, uh, but there's otherwise no regulation requiring that. So.
So I think I heard somewhere or read somewhere um that a couple of years ago, the even health department had some concern. They they didn't, uh, so I thought I read that in in the applicant creep. He quoted some materials um uh, that. If I can get my hand on it quickly, that there was a concern regarding the usage. That I think that was quoted in the the appellant's brief, the health department comments on the proposed construction. Uh, regarding in April of April sixteen to two thousand twenty-one. Uh, he seemed to express some, the health department at that time had a concern regarding the previous uses that might have included. Products that had oil or other twenty-one-eat contaminants. So there seems to be some suggestion, according to the materials presented tonight. Uh, in twenty-one, that the health department did have some concern.
Yes.
So has that concern been addressed in any way?
Well, what I can tell you, I don't want to speak to the health department, uh, wh- which in that is purely their matter. Uh, but what happens when we issue a building permit through the computer system that we use. Uh, as we're about to issue the building permit, it automatically sends a notification to the health department. And they return that notification as basically as approved. So.
The sure, I I that's true, that we we will get to the, I'll read the comments, and I do believe the 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 health department had no comment.
Mm-hmm.
To this proposal, but I'm just wondering out loud, uh, with the echoing, perhaps some of the concerns that we saw in in the neighbors' letters that came to us. Uh, about the previous use with some contaminants. And does it concern you whether or not there's been testing about that or you're saying that it's not your purview?
I I'm saying it's not my purview.
Okay.
And and the issuance of a building permit is not is not my purview. Although we 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 did give opportunity for the health department to comment on the issue of that permit, the issuance of that permit. Uh, and they chose not to. Uh, they they could have raised the issue and that had they made greater that issue in some fashion, that may have delayed or or otherwise. May have prevented the issuance of the permit, but they did not.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, so as you were saying that that you had some other comments and uh, I I'm curious to hear your your thoughts regarding um. Um, uh, the traffic, the traffic flow.
Uh, yeah.
It is it is a busy street central avenue. It looks like a lot of the pickup times are early in the morning, which is prime uh commute time. Uh, that i- is 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 traffic flow something that would be covered under the permitted uh regulation? Uh, of 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 this type of use, open space or parking?
Um.
Any of those relevant to an analysis of of traffic in your your opinion?
Um, I I do not believe that the Dover amendment allows. Uh, uh, require uh allows us to require uh uh traffic mitigation. Um, however, I do look at that. Um, and uh, um, I think I addressed it in my uh response letter. Uh, in the project summary, um, because the the. The the use of the site, the traffic is, it's it's not going to be every uh car coming at once in the morning, for example. Uh, a typical drop-off is over a two-hour period.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and at any given time, according to the traffic study that I did review, uh, there would be ten to fifteen cars per hour at any given time. And the applicant has not only provided for a driveway that that goes in and out, but also a queuing lane. On the property that can accommodate ten to twelve cars at a time. Uh, so we feel that there is. That the applicant has adequately addressed traffic.
Uh, was there a independent traffic study?
Uh, there was. Uh, and that's basically, uh, I I did look at that. Um. The applicant also provided documentation showing that the motion test drop-off times would be seven thirty to nine fifteen. And this is data from their existing facility. So the daycare that's going in there apparently has another uh location here in Needham. And forgive me again, I I did just start uh on June twentieth, so I wasn't.
No, no, listen, we we and we appreciate you coming tonight and 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 coming here to test, so I'm not saying suggesting otherwise. I'm just trying to. Uh, with the traffic, I'm just trying to get a handle on it. You said there was an independent traffic study?
Uh, there was. And and that was the the same one that was submitted to the uh, to the twenty-four. Uh, so again, I did feel that 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 uh the traffic in the uh, the traffic flow and the drop-off and pickup times was adequately addressed. Um, lighting, I again, I do not believe is allowed. Uh, the town is allowed to regulate lighting. Uh, what I've found over the years on. On various sites where off-spill from lighting becomes a problem for adjacent neighbors, it's easily addressed. Um, by shrouds on lighting, um, and that should that become a problem? Typically, operators of daycare centers and and owners of property, other properties that that have lighting issues are are very amenable. Um, to adding shrouds to lights, uh, if they cause a problem. Um, and oftentimes they're put in now just as the the they come with the light fixtures. Um, so light is easily controllable, can be easily remedied, uh, should it be.
But so it's your position that uh that it's your interpretation of the Dover amendment that that. That the town doesn't have the ability to regulate lighting and overspill and have create some conditions that that might uh monitor that?
That is correct.
Did you, excuse me, was lighting included in the plans that you reviewed or not?
It was, it was not.
You're just looking at the building, you know?
Yeah. There actually is a, I I as I as I think back, there was a lighting plan in there. Um, but but I didn't, I I could quite frankly didn't uh pay a lot of attention to that.
Yeah, I just was curious whether it already had shrouds or something.
Okay, no, so I I don't mean to cut you off. We have questions because we're we're interested in and so on, but this is a a a back and forth presentation. So anything else that you wanted to say in support of the the issuance of the the building permit?
Uh, no, o- only that I, uh, you know, without getting too much into the Dover amendment, um, uh, just so people understand my position. Um, you you know, in I I became a building inspector in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, and. Uh, back in the late eighties and early nineties, um, I I believe it was at the time that the Department of Capital Planning and Outlay and. Uh, DCPPO and then and then that morphed, I think, into the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they used to provide a lot of support to. Uh, cities and towns, building inspectors in particular, zoning and planning boards. Um, and the chatter back at the time was very clearly that that uh, the 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 um. Legislature wanted to limit the ability of towns to condition. They they felt that daycare, there was a dire need for daycare centers. I believe they were correct. I think that dire need has not gone away. Um, and that they wanted to limit the ability of cities and towns to um, to condition to put. Conditions that would inhibit the um creation of daycare centers in in. Particularly affordable daycare. Um.
But but in terms of what you you've described upon questioning whether lighting was appropriate or whether um. Parking or traffic flow, you 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 have considered that in your analysis?
Yes.
Did you review plans and so on? So you certainly considered those issues?
Right.
Uh, e- even though you're saying the Dover amendment doesn't require it?
Mm-hmm. I uh, uh, again, uh, you know, I could. If I felt there was excessive or inadequate um traffic. Um. I- i- inadequate facilities for to handle the traffic flow in 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 the drop-off and pickup times. Um, I I would have brought that up with the developer to see if we could.
Well, so just just to, just to be clear. So in other words, Central, I think, is a fairly busy active street in the morning, probably in 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 community hours as well. And so how how does it work? Is 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 in terms of how do people get onto the Central from uh the daycare during these busy hours? Is there's no lighting? There's no stoplights or stop signs? How how does, how would that work in in your your mind?
I I I think that it would work uh as as any property a- as similar to um. The daycare at the at the temple next door or um, uh, there there's one down the further down the street at the at at fourteen fifty-eight Great Plains Avenue. Um, I, I don't think this volume of traffic uh would. Interfere significantly with the current traffic flow.
So does the, you mentioned Temple, think Temple Elliott, which is the the butter that has a daycare facility.
Uh.
Are the numbers similar, a hundred and fifteen or so?
That that I have not analyzed.
Uh, any other questions?
Can you talk a little bit about the parking requirements? It hasn't really been mentioned much, but um, and you do have it in your letter. Um, about the requirement for parking. It seems there's different numbers. Um, it didn't seem to be a condition in the permit.
Right.
Um, for the number of spots. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so um, uh, our zoning bylaw um says that in the case, so we don't have a a specific requirement for childcare centers. We don't say X number of spaces or X number of years of uh, to staff, et cetera. Um, so what it, what it does say is in the case where a building inspector uh cannot determine the. Parking requirements, it should go to the planning board and they can either use a particular document that was created back in nineteen seventy, nineteen ninety-six by. A particular institute. I don't have the language in front of me. Um, or some or some other. Process that they choose. So uh, we view that as that some other process provision as an arbitrary condition. And therefore unreasonable under the Dover amendment. But having said that, the using that that formula. Uh, that the planning board is allowed to use on other uses, uh, the 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 number of spaces complies.
Could you talk a little bit about that? Uh, it is a large lot. I think it's uh well over a hundred thousand square feet. So t- tell us about your your analysis of the parking.
Uh, I I don't have that particular analysis with me. I would, I I would really have to pull out the plans. I believe it's twenty-nine spaces. Um, but the particular u- using the, if I may, uh. Yes, just like the.
So I'm sure it's tied, there's a number of parking required, it's tied into the number of of students. Of course, these are young students that don't drive, so it's gonna be parents dropping off.
Yeah, it's it's mostly parents dropping off uh and and uh employees. Um, but the the particular numbers uh that are required by the um. The. The American Traffic Institute or or ITE, um. Again, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but um, they're the same numbers that were approved by the planning board. Planning board agreed that the number of spaces provided comes up complied with that and and that number has not changed.
Okay, great. Any other, Peter? The other comments? Okay, great. Well, thank you for giving us your 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 views and and your. The reasons why the uh building permit issued. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. No, thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, so uh we're making good progress. Um. And next, we'd like to hear from the the appellee, uh, Evans Huber. I'm asking for a piece of paper. I left my pad at home.
Good evening, and um, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Evans Huber. I'm counsel for the uh developer um and the recipient of the building permit, Needham Enterprises. You've been. Deluged with a lot of paper, lawyers, including myself. Uh, but I think in some ways, we can boil this down to something that is much simpler than the. Scores and scores of legal analysis that you've received. There are a few points that I would ask the board to focus on. Um. Before we talk about the individual sections of the bylaw that are allegedly violated by this building permit. The main one is that the only question that this board can answer and has the authority to answer is whether or not. This building permit was issued in violation of a particular provision of the bylaw. Um, section seven point two point one says that no building or structure shall be constructed, relocated, added or demolished without a permit. Having been issued by the building inspector, no such permit shall be issued until the construction, et cetera, et cetera, shall comply with the bylaw. So that's the question before you. Does this building permit comply with the bylaw? And that means that if there's an allegation of a violation of the bylaw. The the appellants need to point to a particular bylaw that they're saying has been violated. You do not have the authority to say, well, wouldn't it be a good idea if we regulated traffic? Wouldn't it be a good idea if we regulated the possibility of hazardous materials on the site? The fact is that there are not bylaw provisions that allow, putting aside the question of the Dover amendment. Uh, which we can talk about in a minute. There is not a bylaw provision, for example, that regulates traffic. A bylaw provision that was alluded to by Mr. Sanders, five point three point five. He said that's a traffic bylaw. What it actually says is pedestrian and vehicular movement shall be protected within the site and egressing it. Through selection of egress points and provision for adequate site distances.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What what's actually brief from the bylaw?
Five point three point five.
Five three three.
It, well, I'll wait until you turn to me.
Five three five safety?
Yes, that's the one that that Mr. Sanders alluded to as giving the uh as requiring. Traffic mitigation. And he says the absence of traffic mitigation in this instance constitutes a violation of the bylaw. If you read it, it says pedestrian and vehicular movement shall be protected within the site and egressing from it. It does not say driving up and down Central Avenue. And it says the way that that is done is through the selection of egress points and provisions for adequate site distances. Says nothing about the ability to insist on. Uh, police details or uh changing the timing of lights at intersections and that sort of thing, which was um are among the things that. The appellants want you to require. So again, the the in this particular instance, what I'm drawing your attention to is the fact that. If you, there needs to be a specific bylaw provision that you, that that is in fact violated by this project. The kinds of things that the that the butters are concerned about. Traffic, the alleged possible presence of hazardous materials on the site and things of that nature. Those are things that are addressed through site plan review. It is a hundred percent clear that this board does not have the authority to engage in site plan review. Section seven point four point three says that sev- that site plan review is to be conducted by the planning. The planning board did that. We we went to court. The land court ruled that in this instance, and given the Needham bylaws and given this project, the facts of this project. That the site plan review that was engaged in was impermissible, and that's why the decision was voided. This board does not have the authority to take up and say, well, now we're going to engage in site plan review. And we're going to impose the kinds of things that the planning board has now been told they could not do. So let's talk about the specific sections of the bylaw that the appellants allege are violated by this. Uh, by this building permit. First is whether or not the barn violates the prohibition on more than one non-residential structure on a lot in this zoning district. That provision applies to SRA, single residence A and single residence B districts. So the question is, can that provision be enforced against a Dover amendment use? And the answer is clearly no. What the what the bylaw says is that there cannot be more than one non-residential structure or use. In a SRA, in this instance, SRA district. That is exactly what is going on next door, more than one non-residential use on the lot. It's also, and I attached this to my uh letter to this board. It's also completely inconsistent with the position that this town has taken with respect to this question. it's also completely inconsistent with the position that this town has taken with respect to this question. I attached for your review, a decision of the planning board from twenty fifteen uh, in which the question was whether or not Temple Beth Shalom was going to be allowed to have multiple non-residential uses on a lot. That decision was issued by this planning board, which had three of the same members that issued the decision in our case. The decision was, and it explicitly states in the decision, that the question before the board is whether or not these multiple uses are going to be allowed by that special permit. I attached it to my letter. Clearly allows, and the reason it allows it is because of the Dover amendment. If you have a Dover amendment protected use, childcare or house of worship in those instances, you do not have to comply, you are not bound by that provision of the bylaw. Temple Beth Shalom is in an SRB district, but it's uh, the same restriction in SRA and SRB. That to me is clear evidence that the town recognizes that that bylaw provision is not enforceable in the case of childcare or house of worship. Temple Beth Shalom, in that decision, it was actually three uses. House of worship, childcare, and office. All three of those uses were allowed uh, on a single lot in apparent violation of that bylaw in a zoning district where that bylaw would otherwise apply. So I think it's clear.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Do you think there's a difference between use and structure?
Well, obviously there's a difference between use and structure, but I do not think
In terms of the application of the Dover amendment.
No, I definitely do not think in terms of the application of the Dover amendment, and if the bylaw says more than one structure or use is not allowed, non-residential structure or use is not allowed in this zoning district, I think it is uh, dancing on the head of a pin to say, well, maybe more than one non-residential use is allowed, but not more than one non-residential structure. The rationale for saying that we're gonna allow non-one, not more than one non-residential use is the same rationale you would apply to saying we are gonna apply more, allow more than one non-residential structure. And in the Petrucci decision that Mr. Sanders was referring to, which I also referred to in my letter, that was a situation in which there was going to be two uses and two structures on a lot in a town where the zoning bylaw on its face would not permit that. And the, and the Petrucci court said, that's the kind of restriction that the Dover amendment expressly prohibits. Um, so I, I think that it's very clear that the case law, as well as this town's practice is uh, reflects the fact that the town does not consider that provision enforceable against childcare or religious uses. In addition, there's also the question of whether or not, even if you didn't buy that argument, there's also the question of whether or not this barn is a, would qualify as an accessory structure. And if it does, that restriction doesn't apply. It's just irregardless of whether or not the Dover amendment protects that barn. You can have an accessory structure and the, and the restriction against more than one non-residential structure on a, on a lot is not violated. This barn qualifies as an accessory structure to the childcare facility. You're gonna hear a lot about, you know, they don't actually need this storage, but if you were at the trial, you would have heard Pat Day, who runs the Needham Children's Center, who's gonna be the tenant there, testify that they are currently using about two thousand square feet of storage space at their current location. You, you would have heard Mark Glusing, the architect, testify that this building was designed with minimal indoor storage space because it was always the understanding that the barn was gonna be used for storage for the childcare facility. That's the way, that's the reason the building was designed with limited storage on the interior. And you can look at this, the, the building design, plan, the floor plan, and see that the storage that's in there is things like closets, you know, it's not anywhere remotely close to two thousand square feet of storage, that's what the barn is gonna be used for. So the definition of an accessory uh, under Needham's bylaws is, an accessory building is a building devoted exclusively to a use subordinate to and customarily incidental to a principal use. The subordinate use here is storage, obviously every childcare facility wants storage. There has been an argument made, and it's in the appellant's papers, um, although Mr. Dylan, Dylan did not specifically refer to it, that this doesn't qualify because it's too big. There's nothing in the de- definition of accessory building or accessory use that refers to the size of the accessory structure. What needs to be customary? The argument has been made, well, a building of that size is not customary to use as a storage facility. That's not what the bylaw defines as a accessory use. It's the use that has to be incidental to the primary use, storage, customarily incidental, not the size of the building. And it's for that reason, undoubtedly, that the prior building commissioner, Mr. Roach, in addition to the opinion that um, uh, Mr. Prondak just expressed, the prior building commissioner also, at the time that this was going through the planning board process, wrote a letter saying that in his opinion, and I attached this letter to my, to my letter to you, that in his opinion, that this building was used exclusively for childcare-related use, uh, it would be, qualify as an extre- as an accessory structure and not be a violation of zoning. So I think that it's clear that either because that barn is protected as a Dover amendment use as part of the childcare facility, or because it's an accessory structure under, in, in either case, that barn is permitted. The fact that that barn is there is not a violation of the town's bylaws and does not justify revoking the building permit. There, the next thing that they allege is that the plans do not comply with the stormwater management uh, bylaw. Mr. Pron- the applicant did submit uh, a stormwater management plan. Uh, Mr. Prondak points out in his letter to you that uh, that he showed, that it shows sufficient compliance with the stormwater bylaw, stamped and signed by a Massachusetts registered civil engineer, and no evidence has been presented to you that the plan submitted is insufficient. There's allegations that it's insufficient, but there's no evidence that it's insufficient. And certainly nothing to justify overriding the judgment of the building commissioner that it is sufficient.
So let me stop you there, so you're talking about evidence presented. In your opinion, would the uh, the applicant, the appellant have an opportunity to present evidence to the zoning board on this issue or other issues?
No, I think that the question you've got to determine is whether or not, because a lot of this is within the area of discretion of the uh, the building commission. So the building commissioner uh, receives a plan, he deems it to be adequate, he looks at what the plan is, he expressed to you some views about the adequacy of the stormwater management plan. Uh, he's quite certain that the, that the way this plan is set up is um, but you know, not gonna result in any overflow onto neighboring properties. And um, so it's not like we're ignoring this issue, we, we have a site plan that is
I, I'm not, I'm not uh, making statements contrary to what the building commissioner has testified, but you said earlier about there's been no evidence presented, and my question
I was quoting Mr.
Yeah, yeah, but so in other words, at what point may the applicant, uh, the appellant present evidence at this form?
Not in this forum, because
At what form then?
If, if, if they are successful, they, they attempted in uh, to become parties to the litigation in land court in, on several occasions, they were not successful. They have appealed that, they are trying to get the appeals court to say that they should have been allowed to intervene, and then have the matter remanded back to the land court. If they are successful in doing that, that is where uh, such evidence could, you know, the alleged inadequacy of the site, of the stormwater management or any other alleged inadequacy could be presented. Stormwater management
Let me stop you for a second, I don't mean to interrupt, but obviously this is critical to, to what is being alleged here, so you mentioned no evidence presented that the uh, the, the applicant, the, the appellant is saying that they try, or you're saying that they tried to get into the land court, and for whatever reason were denied the ability to present evidence. This feels a little like a due process issue, that if there's alleged evidence, we don't know if there is, but you're saying there's the absence of evidence. At what stage might these folks present evidence, if not to the zoning board?
If a court tells them that they, that the town is entitled, in this instance, to require this project to go through site plan review, that's where it would be presented. And by the way, these issues were presented extensively to the planning board. And uh, this and many, and many of the other issues, and, and the, and the uh, the court said, the process that this applicant was required to go through for this Dover amendment use was impermissible violation of the Dover amendment, and that's why the decision was a no. So again, the kinds of questions that you're asking now, Mr. Goldman, are things that are considered through the process of site plan review. This board does not have the authority to, to engage in site plan review, nor to require us to engage in site plan review, nor to tell the building inspector that he has to revoke the building permit if site plan review has not been conducted. These appellants may, at some point, may be required to uh, uh, be allowed to intervene, and they may get the right to have the matter re- remanded back to the land court. That will be their only avenue. The reason they were not allowed to intervene, according to the land court, was because their interests, it's not because nobody was considering these issues, it was because in the land court's judgment, that the interests of these neighbors were adequately represented by the existing parties, in this case, the planning board. So um, you know, the, the litigation can't, on these issues cannot go on forever, at least in my view, it shouldn't. And so uh, you know, maybe they will persuade the appeals court that they should have been allowed to intervene, and if that's the case, i- i- if the appeals court says, no, you're not, that's be because the appeals court agrees with the land court that their interests were adequately represented. If the appeals court thinks otherwise, then they will be allowed to intervene and the matter will be remanded to the land court.
Well, so, so what troubles me a little bit, so clearly the, the land court has spoken and said that this, the planning board's site review was inappropriate and struck and voided it. What I'm just struggling with uh, is uh, and it was prompted by your, your suggestion, your statement, that no evidence was presented, and that's why I struggle with this lack of due process. So if they were denied uh, opportunity to present the land court and the, the site review uh, analysis was struck, what purpose would the zoning appeals forum provide?
So a couple of things, in response to that question, Mr. Goldman. First, the reason that they were denied by the land court, the right to intervene, where they would have raised this or any other issues, is because in the judgment of the land court, these issues were, and their concerns about these issues were already being adequately represented. Meaning that these issues were being presented in a way that the land court uh, you know, was going to consider them or not. You may disagree with the idea that the land court voided this site plan review process, but that's what the land court did. So what that is saying basically is, with respect to Dover amendment uses, you don't get to do everything that you would do in a non-Dover amendment context.
No, no, I, I, we get that, I think, I think we're going back and forth, I'm just struggling with the due process piece, if they weren't able to present in that form, it can't present in this form, it feels like the, the issue has never been flushed out.
Here's what's gonna happen, if you, if you deny this appeal, which I believe you have the requirement of doing, I do not think you have the authority to uh, revoke this building permit. If you deny it, they will appeal, they will be in land court, where they can raise these issues again. If they don't get the satisfaction they want, they will be able to go to the appeals court.
I'm sure I follow you.
Believe me, I'm, I'm, by no means encouraging that more people be prompted to testify, but you said, and I agree with you, that, that our focus should be on whether there are violations of the zoning bylaw uh, intended upon the issuance of this building permit. Now, just looking at stormwater for a minute, without getting into the argument as to whether stormwater is something that is susceptible to review by the town under the Dover amendment or not. There, this is one case where there's a specific standard set forth in the zoning bylaw that the stormwater plan needs to satisfy. There, okay, and, and I'm sure you're familiar with it. Your, the building inspector has said he's reviewed it and he's comfortable that it's been satisfied. Whether or not he, that's within his permitted purview under the Dover amendment, because frankly, I personally am uh, I'll take whatever and advise the building inspectors want to give on any of these issues, but my question is, if for instance, an engineer was to come forward and say, no, I've reviewed it, and it doesn't meet that requirement, are you saying that's not, that, that's the type of evidence I think Howard is asking about, you're saying that's not something that we could properly hear, but somehow if we make a decision here that's appealed to the land court, that evidence could be presented to the land court?
They will ask the land court for the right to do that, and the court, and the land court will say yes or no. I would also remind you, this board, that it's not just Mr. Prondak who reviewed this stormwater management plan, this was reviewed by the town's engineering department, it was extensively reviewed during the planning board hearing process. If you look at the decision, which has been per- permitted, submitted to you, there is no concern whatsoever in that decision with the adequacy of the stormwater management plan. So simply saying it doesn't satisfy the requirement, I mean, you could say, well, there's a due process concern because why uh, you, you know, why shouldn't they be allowed to present evidence? I would, I would turn that question around and say, well, if somebody simply says every one of these viol- these zoning uh, provisions has been violated, and I want you to allow me to have multiple hearings on this process to perhaps persuade you that that's the case, my clients' due process rights are also being violated here. We went through a year-long planning board process, then we went through a year and a half of litigation over this. We're coming up on three years from, from the time that we originally submitted this building permit application. These issues have been looked at by town departments, by the, 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 the planning board hired a civil engineering firm, uh, Greenman Peterson, who reviewed not just traffic, originally he was being hired by, to review traffic, but he also looked at uh, engineering issues, uh, and so the, there are, you know, this was the town's own peer reviewer who looked at this and approved these things. If I could move on to the other uh, alleged violations of the, of the zoning bylaw. Landscape, there was some discussion about whether or not landscaping is a permissible area of regulation under the Dover amendment. And you were asking the question, uh, you know, referring to some legal maxim about, you know, doesn't every, every word in a, in a statute have to have some meaning, and what, what might open space be referring to? And I guess I would respond on Mr. Feenberg by saying, there's another legal maxim that says if you want a particular provision in a, or a word in a statute, you put it in, and if you leave it out, that's an indication that you did not intend it to be regulated. If you wanted to regulate landscaping, or if you wanna say that the town has the authority to regulate landscaping under a uh, in, in a Dover amendment use, it's a simple thing to put the word landscaping in the, in the Dover amendment, it's not there. So I, I think that it is not, it is not uh, a permissible area of regulation under the Dover amendment. I would also point out that
Let me just send that, I'm trying to flush this out as best we can in a minute of time. So the, the, that you agree certainly that the Dover amendment does provide, provide regulation of open space?
Yes.
And you heard the inspector describe, it wasn't a definition in our bylaw, how do you define open space?
Well, I guess I would define it similarly to the, to the uh, building inspector, space that does not have a building on it.
So wouldn't that feel, isn't landscaping in an area where there's no building? You don't landscape a building, so you open, you landscape open space.
Well, you landscape open space, but that doesn't mean that landscaping is a permissible area of regulation. This is saying, you know, and yes, Mr. Frieden's first point is, well, maybe it's redundant to say open space and lot coverage. But to say, well, because you can do various things with open space, including landscaping, that means that landscaping is a permissible area of regulation in the Dover amendment. I don't think that follows.
I don't think it follows. But I think you agree that's ambiguous. It's not defined in the bylaw.
I know. I do not think it's ambiguous. I think it is very clear that landscaping is not an enlisted area of regulation under the Dover amendment.
Right, right.
And I do not think it's ambiguous to say, open space means landscape. I do not think that that is a valid interpretation of the word open space based on an amb- you know, a perceived ambiguity as to what open space might be referring.
So perceived ambiguity about open space. So, so how do we resolve it? I mean, it's take your opinion or are there cases that support your position?
No, so a couple, a couple, a couple of other points I'd like to make. One is that this landscaping plan was reviewed three times by the design review board, who eventually signed off on it. You know, the first time we presented it, we you know, they thought there should be more you know, screening, shrubbery and so forth. And so we, we revised it. And we went back and eventually they approved the landscaping plan.
What binds the developer to build for that plan?
I don't know what to say to that other than that he's going to build and according to the plan that was submitted.
That's not part of the building permit package, right?
He's not going to have a nude building there with no landscaping.
I understand, but
so
saying that a landscape plan was submitted, reviewed to death and approved, but now it has no force. It's, you left out that part.
It's not, it's not my view that this board has the authority to start imposing conditions, but I can tell you that the when the developer's intention is to landscape the property in the way that was presented to the planning board. Or in the way that was approved by the design review board. So so, so, and the, and the other thing, yes, I would say.
But let me sort of come back to this. So, so you're saying that, I, I, this is an interactive process. I mean, you, you have more knowledge, you went through these trials, we didn't. Obviously, there's tons of materials, we reviewed it to the best of our ability at this point. And this is the open hearing is a chance to, to, to bring some light to these issues. So as, as, as Peter points out, that, that there's a plan submitted, it's been revised with some type of input from the planning board and others that, that has, I will hear from the neighbors whether that plan is, in their opinion, sufficient, but that what's the enforcement mechanism? So if this board were to, to, to come up with some some general conditions that, that would seem to be contained in the the plan submitted, but just to tie it down to have the enforcement, what would be objectionable about that?
Nothing in this particular instance. I do not think as a general matter, this board has the authority to start imposing conditions because then you are veering into the area of site form review. In this particular instance that we're talking about, what the landscaping plan that the developer had proposed. The answer to your question is, the answer to your question of what would be objectionable, the answer is nothing.
So, you know, frankly, you've been to these zoning meetings for years. And yet we try to come up with some level of consensus. And so if we've got some plans that have been scrubbed and that appear to be appropriate and the board comes up with a decision making those enforceable, at least on the landscaping, you would have no objection.
That's correct.
And maybe with respect to the the erosion plan?
Well, I will tell you that the erosion control plan has now been reviewed by the department, the engineering department and approved by Mr. Ryder.
Well, understood. So in other words, that's a second point of agreement with the, the, the town itself, as well as the developer.
We're gonna, we're gonna comply with the erosion plan that was submitted and approved. Obviously.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue. You're going through the list.
Okay. Excuse me. Parking. About parking, this is an allegation that the town, that the building permit does not comply with the town's parking requirements. Mr. Prandak wasn't able to put his finger on the formula that the town has used for ever since I've been practicing before this board and the planning board and long before that, going to my partner, Roy Kramer, which is that for childcare facilities, and this is based on some study by some civil engineers, for childcare facilities, the parking requirement is if you have an enrollment of more than forty children, it's eight spaces plus one space per forty children, plus one space for each staff member.
Especially if you're gonna repeat that. So you're saying, one more time, please, eight spaces regarding?
If you're, if you're trying to calculate the required parking for a childcare facility, the formula that the town has been using in every instance that I'm aware of, and I've been before this board on that exact issue. The formula is eight spaces plus one space for each forty children plus one space for each staff member. So in this case, we, the operator intends to commence her operation with a hundred and fifteen children and eighteen staff. So if you apply that formula, it's eight plus three plus eighteen, which is twenty-nine. We have thirty spaces on the, on the proposed plan. And I would also point out to this board that this issue, among many others, was reviewed by GPI, Greenman Peterson, in the town, the planning board's peer reviewer, not ours, who reviewed everything that our engineers did. And they said on multiple occasions, and I'm, I'm reading from a letter dated August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one from Greenman Peterson.
So is that part of your attachments?
Uh, no, because I so I apologize. I have copies of it if you would like.
That's what I'm doing. To follow along with you, I'm writing as quickly as I can. So
Would you like me to give you a copy? Okay, you've got enough. I'll just read from it briefly. The point being that on multiple occasions in this letter that I'm reading from August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, GPI says thirty parking spaces is sufficient based on the town calculations. Then, and another place in this letter, they say, the proponent is currently proposing thirty spaces, which more than satisfies the average demand established in the ITE parking generation, which is what's referred to in the bylaw, and the requirements of the town. They base that on the ITE parking generation fourth edition, which is the most recent addition, land use category five, six, five childcare facility. And then, and then they say, the proponent is currently proposing thirty spaces, which more than satisfies the average demand in the ITE parking generation manual and the requirements of the town and referring to that. They're alluding to that formula, which, I mean, I've been before this board on other childcare facilities, you know? And, and we, and, you know, back when Mr. Roach was the building commissioner, he would write letters to this board saying, this is the formula we use. And this is, in my opinion, this is the required parking for this childcare facility. The one at fourteen fifty-eight.
Fair enough. There has been a consistent formula. And there is a, an expert report that you apparently are referencing
Yes.
that we need to become more familiar with, that, that, that is
That, that is from the peer, the peer reviewer, the expert hired by the town. Or hired, in this instance, hired by the planning board. Excuse me. Lighting. Mr. Prandak said that he does not believe that lighting is a permissible area of regulation for a childcare facility under the Dover amendment. And while I agree with that, we did, I mean, there's no word in the Dover amendment that could possibly be stretched to include lighting. But but that does not mean that we are ignoring the question of lighting. We did submit a lighting plan. And it's one of those plans that shows all the foot candles at every location. And I think the, the bylaw says that you can't have more than one foot candle outside the footprint of your property. Our, our lighting plan complies with that. It will have, as Mr. Prandak referred to, the, I'm not sure what the correct term is, but you know, the shading or the, the directing of the light so that it does not spill offsite. So again, regardless of whether or not the Dover amendment allows the town to regulate lighting in this instance, which I do not think it does, there is no basis to conclude that this project does not have an adequate lighting plan. The, the appellants have raised a couple of other issues that they say the project does not comply with. Those include, well, I guess the only one that we haven't specifically referenced is a construction management plan. They say that a construction management plan should be required. There's no place in the bylaw that requires a construction management plan. It doesn't provide a basis for this court, this court, this board to revoke the building permit. So in general, my, my view of this matter is that the, the board should focus on the specific provisions of the bylaw that are allegedly violated. Keeping in mind that in some of them, some of the provisions of the bylaw, you know, the building commissioner is vested with discretion to determine whether or not the bylaw has been complied with. And and look at those and only those. Not be thinking about, for example, this issue of alleged contamination on the site. There is no town bylaw that regulates that class. If these folks are, believe that there is contamination on the site, their their avenue for addressing that is through the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. That's who they, that's who they need to go to. And so you know, I, I, again, I do not believe that this board can say, well, they should address this possible issue in some way and therefore we're going to revoke the building permit. I don't think you have the authority to do that.
Are you concerned at all about the allegations about hazardous waste that the previous use was ones that would suggest the possibility? I think I saw some letters, which we'll get to, I'll read later, that there may have been some barrels. Are you concerned at all with childcare? Use?
My client had a licensed site professional, an LSP, advising him through this process. We proposed, but the, what the LSP said was there's no visible evidence of, of hazardous materials on site. If volatile organics of the sort that are alleged might be present, such as gasoline or an oil spill, the remediation for that would be you either put an impervious cap on top of it, such as a parking area that's impervious. Or you, any area that's not impervious, such as a grass area or a play area that's going to be used or accessed by the children or not, none of the parents, would be covered by twelve inches of clean fill. That's what the DEP would require, even if such things were found. You know, such things, such things as are alleged might be there. That's what you would do. So, you know, this idea that this insinuation that my client is some sort of heartless person who doesn't care about the health of children is just, it's offensive. He's, that was what he has been planning to do. Even if it's, you know, you, you even if you were to test and say, oh yeah, there was oil spilled here fifteen years ago. And, and the DEP would say, well, you don't really need to do anything about it. He would, this is what his intention and proposal was to put twelve inches of clean fill on any pervious area that the children are going to have access to.
So you mentioned the LSP, Licensed Site Professional Report. Is that part of the record?
No, I did not say a report. I said my client had an LSP advising him. So I, you know, I don't know that what I just said is what I'm, I'm repeating what the LSP told us, which is
No, 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 I'm saying further, is, is there such a report? You're saying, no, it's an advisory, these are words and not a report?
Yes, this, this is my client's LSP telling him that if you locate, if such, you know, VOCs, for example, were, were the presence of them was identified on the site, the remediation that you would do is you would put clean fill on top of them or a pervious surface, such as a building or a parking area.
So you mentioned no visible. Again, I'm just trying to explore this. I'm trying to anticipate what, what some of the neighbor concerns might be. No visible evidence on a site. How do you see oil contaminants in the soil with the naked eye, without, without invasive tests, drilling, for example?
Again, Mr. Goldman, the LSP says, has told me, I've spoken to him about this, and he has said, you know, if there is actual VOCs there, you can smell them. And, 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 but even if you found them, even if you drilled and, and, you know, or took core samples or whatever the correct terminology is, and said, yep, oil was spilled here, you know, fifteen years ago when somebody was repairing race cars. That's the kind of alleged contamination we're talking about. We're not talking about asbestos or other toxic materials. And, and, you know, what the LSP has said to both my client and to me is, the way you would address that, if it were found, is to put, is to either cover it, cap it, which is the term, or if you're not going to cap it, then you put twelve inches of clean fill on it. And that's that's what Mr. Borelli is planning to do. Regardless of, you know, whether there might not be any such VOCs there.
I think neither one of us knows that this has been some neighbor concern, so I'm just trying to flush how this, how this might work. And you're saying that the solution, if it was found, would be to cover it with twelve inches of soil. But in the absence of testing, how would you know what to cover? That's all, I, maybe we're going in circles.
So you, what you cover is you cover the areas where the children are going to have access. And they're not going to have unfettered access to the entire three acres of the site. And, and, and so that's what you cover and that's what he would, that's what he intends to cover. But again, you know, the issues that we're discussing right now are certainly issues of significance and issues of importance. But they are beyond the purview of this board, which is faced with the question of whether or not to revoke the building permit. You cannot revoke the building permit unless you point to a specific provision of the bylaw that is not, that this project does not comply with. Putting aside whether or not, you know, twelve inches of fill is the right way to address this or not. There's no bylaw in the town that controls this. And, you know, obviously, there is the DEP. If somebody wants to make a complaint to the DEP and allege the presence of this or that, that's their avenue. If, if, if what my client is proposing is insufficient.
Thank you. So are you done with your, your, your comments?
Yes.
And does the board have any more questions or comments? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, just give me, let me have a minute to look at my notes here. Okay, so that so we're done with the, the formal presentment. And so now I think what I'd like to do is to read, or at least to summarize the comments that we've received. Just give me a minute to get my hands on those notes. So that over the course of the, the many days, apparently the board has received at least sixteen written comments. And I, I don't intend to, to read all of the comments, but just want to get the essence of the comments into the record. So Karen Langsner expressed concern in a communication to the board on November thirteenth that there's a merit of concerns about the plans for the site, including safety around both the environmental and traffic issues, among others. And she is, is looking for some, some type of conditions, I think, from the zoning board. Stanley Keller has, has been a longtime resident and country way and writes to express his opposition to the permitting of this by the, the building inspector. And is questioning the process that was used to 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 get to this point. He felt that the issuance of a permit was premature. Robert Onafree on November fourteenth, who lives on Pine Street. Is opposed to the daycare. Regarding traffic. Concern about contamination on the site. And that the daycare itself is is not set back enough from the Central Ave. Andrea Denenberg on November fourteenth writes. Of the concerns that she has and seeks to cancel the building permit. Norman McLeod on Pine Street, forty-one Pine Street, disappointed. That with with the the land court process. Is concerned about the effect on the the residential neighborhood. On November thirteenth, Sharon Gold. Writes a letter. And she wants the issues of traffic congestion to be considered. A central lab is too narrow to install a left turn to allow the daycare traffic to. To get onto it, talks about the the busy hours of the morning and the afternoon. Mike Rasso on November fifteenth writes, and by the way, he lives on Fifteen Bridle Trail. That he had written letters some time ago, which clearly depicted barrels that represent holding vessels, what could be considered hazardous materials or liquids or old vehicles. And is trying to get a handle on how the any contamination might be mitigated in this process. Joe Abruzzi on November eleventh writes the board. He he shares concerns, and I think he might be here to testify. Leonard Jukowski on November twelfth writes concerns about the large commercial facility that will host children. A concern about the traffic. Patricia Falaco on November thirteenth writes concern to the the board. About the character and living, quality of living for the residential neighborhood to allow a large commercial building to be built. Meredith Freed on November thirteenth writes. Disapproval regarding safety, environmental, traffic issues. Alan, we talked about Kimmy Grasso on November seventh, traffic concerns. And Robert Chamasi on November sixteenth. Expresses concerns about the bar and the setback, the lighting. On November thirteenth. You heard from Sharon Gold, I think we already mentioned her. And Dustin on November sixteenth has concerns about the traffic, among other things. So I I didn't read verbatim, but there appears to be at least sixteen written submittals of of pressing concern. And I just wanted that to be read into the record. Let's, okay, okay, sir. So Peter points out, let's get into the the record. The comments from other people in the town departments are important. The building inspector certainly has testified, and thank you for your testimony, sir. The town engineer, the regarding erosion plan, the plan is good to proceed. It will need to be uploaded to permit the portal and someone's, but it appears that the town engineer has approved the erosion control plan. The planning board has no comment to this appeal. The public health director. Has no further comment on the proposed development. The fire department has no comments. And the Public Works. States that the erosion control plan needs to be submitted to, I think they've done that. Engineering has no comment or objection to the current storm water plan and finds no objection with the issued building permit. Stephanie, have I read all of the departments? Okay, thank you. So now, let's, it's, I think at this point, maybe we open this up to the public, Daphne, to get anyone who wants to speak, both for or against this appeal. Oh, okay, fair enough. So we, okay, that's that's a great point. With with Zoom, we have different audiences, but let's start with the audience. You folks have been here tonight. Thank you. If you can come forward, please, we'll have everyone ask to come forward, please, and state your name and your your location, where you live, please.
I'm Carol Goldback.
Good evening.
And just a quick comment.
So if I may, where do you live, please?
Oh, forty-five Longfellow Road in Needham. I am from Needham Children's Center, and I am just coming forward to ask, maybe we put some sort of a limit on how long people talk. With the planning board. Meetings, people were able to run on for a long time. And while I agree that everyone should be able to speak and be heard, I think that a time limit would be appropriate and. Hope that we could impose one of those.
What amount of time do you think is appropriate in your experience?
Well, I think at the public, public health department, that one, I think it was three minutes. I think that that is good, two minutes, maybe. The planning board, some went on forty minutes, very long, and I. I just. I'm sorry.
The the source, I think, was making jokes. Okay, so you 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 want to have time limits?
I think there's a lot of joking, and I think that without being emotional and upset. I think that the town, the people who are being affected by this have really been. Kind of. Attacked a little bit on social media and in the meetings. And I feel like I just want to voice that, that when you listen to all of this, we went to court. We, you know, testified everything, and all of the stuff that's been brought to you has already been talked about. A lot, and I just feel like with every meeting that's had, it's posted on social media, which I know goes wild. And it's just, the childcare center has been attacked, the building, the the now the planning board has been attacked even just tonight. And I just feel like laughs are had and eye rolls, and it's just not appropriate. So I just want all of you to know that. I really appreciate it, but those are my two cents.
So let me, a question, I I didn't hear. So are you in favor or against this 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 appeal?
I would like the building to continue and the permit to be.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard, please? Sir? Be kind of just to tell us your name and your address, please, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joe Abruzzi. I'm a town meeting member, I'm not an abutter to the property. I do have a couple of subjects I would like to talk about. It will take a little more than three minutes, and I hope you would afford the time. I have a structured presentation, and I'll get through it as swiftly as possible.
Thank you.
Before I do that, there there are a couple of points that were made earlier that I just want to make sure are factually correct. There was a statement by the building commissioner that an independent traffic study was conducted. I do not think that was the case. The traffic study was done by the developer, by the developer's traffic engineer, and the town did a peer review. The town did not hire an independent study, they did a peer review.
So the town, so the the developer had the traffic study and the town.
Conducted, hired everybody to do a peer review of that study.
Isn't that typically a separate peer bias looking at it?
It is. The statement was that an an independent traffic study was conducted.
What's the difference?
The traffic study was paid for and hired by the developer.
Review as opposed to generative. That is a difference, distinction without a lot of difference, because that's the way it's always done, so please move on.
Two, a few other quick points. The applicant said that the abutters' interests were represented in the trial.
I don't mean, I don't mean to rush you, but we have a lot of people who want to be heard, and we've been doing this for almost two hours already.
Understood. So let me just, here's a presentation I would like to just quickly walk through. Okay, okay. I'd really like to focus on two main points that have been discussed, the setback and the number of buildings. I am not an attorney and I'm not a bylaw expert, so I can't. Discuss the legal interpretations, but what I can represent is a resident interpretation. And I'd like to just spend a few minutes to talk to you about that. So this is a picture of the area. It's SRA, and if you look at this aerial view, it's completely residential, with the exception of Temple Aliyah. The box in red is sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue. Everything around here are homes. All the roadways that you see are one lane in each direction. Most of them don't have shoulders on them, so a car cannot pass along the side. And a lot of them don't have sidewalks either. So the area, when people are talking about traffic. The infrastructure that's built in this area isn't built necessarily for a lot of traffic. And that's why some of these roads do get congested at rush hours, people are going into town or out of town. The other thing that I wanted to point out, as I zoom in a little bit here, is looking at this area and the immediate properties that surround sixteen eighty-eight. The setback on these homes averages a hundred and five feet. I know that's longer than what the zoning requires, but the neighborhood characteristic is to have these homes set back. The temple, which is obviously a much bigger building, is set back two hundred and thirteen feet. So I just want to give the the board a visual of the character of the neighborhood. And what this building for sixteen eighty-eight, how to fit that into this character. I'd also note that the property is over three acres in size, and you can see it's very much elongated. So there really is nothing from the property lines that prohibit the building from being set back. There's plenty of space from left to right.
So let me ask you a question, setting it back, what would that do?
So I believe that the setback does a couple of things. Number one, it's congruent with the rest of the neighborhood. This is going to be a significantly large building. It could be, depending on whether the barn is included or not included, it could be up to five point five times the size of all the neighboring homes. And such a large bulk structure. Should be, to be congruent with the rest of the neighborhood, should be set back further, similar to the way Temple Aliyah has been set back. That's not sixty-four feet from the street, it's been set back two hundred and thirteen feet.
But isn't it true, sir, that the 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 building, the daycare as as presented in these plans meets the town setback requirements?
I believe the town setback requirement is thirty-five feet. So I'm not contesting that it violates that requirement. What I'm trying to depict here is what is actually in place in the neighborhood today. And it is, it does exceed thirty-five feet. And I would, I think what you're going to hear from some of the abutters is, if we're going to build another building, build it in line or with the character of the area. So just to give you a depiction in another way. I plotted out the surrounding homes. They're all about twenty-seven hundred square feet in size, and as I said, the average setback is a hundred and five feet. Temple Aliyah is in the upper right, it's a much bigger building, over twenty thousand square feet, but it is set back two hundred and thirteen feet. The daycare that's being proposed, if you don't include the barn. Is a ten thousand square foot building, and the proposal is to set it back sixty-four feet. Again, it's within the bylaw, but. That is a much bigger building than all the surrounding homes, and it's actually being proposed to be, have it, to have a setback closer than all of the other homes in the surrounding area.
So I'm sorry, in this proposed plan for the the child care, is it, you said sixty-five feet setback?
I I believe that it was sixty-four feet.
But and that you're suggesting that the neighborhood has an average of how much?
An average of one oh five for the homes. If you think about the daycare, including the barn, the barn adds another forty-eight hundred square feet. So now we're talking about almost a fifteen thousand square foot complex, two-building complex. So significantly larger, and as I mentioned. This size of a complex is almost five and a half times larger than the existing homes. It's forty-one feet closer than the average setback of those homes. And it's closer than the immediately adjacent home, the Hydamon House at seventeen oh eight Central. To give you a, just a sense of what, and so I suggest, for a building of this size. The setback should be between a hundred and fifty and two hundred feet. And again, the lot clearly allows for that type of setback, and it doesn't impede the operation of a daycare. Just to give you a sense of what the site looks like. This is the Hydamon Home at seventeen oh eight. Right to the to the left of it that you see is sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue. And in fact, what you see there is what was the previous home on that property. And it was set back further than seventeen oh eight Blue House on the right. What's being proposed is to put a building sixty-four feet from Central Avenue, which again, you can see is a is a two-lane road, one in each direction. A saw, a ten thousand square foot building or a fourteen thousand square foot complex, that close to the road. Is going to significantly dwarf and dominate over a private residence.
So is it, Mr. Burelli, a safety issue or a visual issue, inconsistent with the name?
So I think it's twofold, and I just have a couple more slides to bring it together. I think, number one, it's a. Neighborhood character issue. And number two, I do think that setting it back provides opportunity for additional safety. It can allow for a longer driveway and allow cars to queue up on the property rather than queue up on Central Avenue. And my primary concern, again, is Central Avenue is one lane in each direction, there's no shoulder. When someone wants to make a left turn. And has to stop to find an opening, everybody behind has to stop. You can't go around, there's no left turn lane, there's no shoulder to go around, so it will back up the traffic. And so if there's no space in the driveway of the daycare center. People have to wait for space to be created. A further setback creates a longer driveway, a larger capacity for cars to turn on rather than wait on Central Avenue. So that's what I just spoke about. The plot provides ample space for a larger setback. It'll be congruent with the existing buildings, and the longer driveway will increase safety and reduce backups. The other topic I would like to just quickly address. The other topic I would like to just quickly address is the issue of more than one non-residential building. Now, I know it's already been argued about whether the Dover Amendment allows it or doesn't allow it. So I'm not going to repeat those issues. But one thing that is interesting is I think Mr. Huber said there was a plan to always use the barn for childcare storage. And in fact, the design of the primary building, the ten thousand square foot building, is designed with little storage, maybe closet space, because the barn was planned to use for, to be the storage for the childcare. That's not accurate. When this plan was originally presented, the developer had no use for the barn for the daycare. He was going to use it for his personal use. It was only added to the daycare plan in an attempt to circumvent this law, this bylaw of restricting the number of buildings you can have on a residential lot. I'll play for you what was actually discussed in a one-minute video clip between the planning board and the applicant describing this.
Condition that the barn come down to conform to our town bylaw, which is a valid bylaw. And that's, I understand your position that you now want to fit the barn into the use of the childcare facility in order to save it. But that's what I see is happening here at Evans.
That's absolutely what's happening. We, I, I did not, I'm not pretending otherwise. You are correct. Originally, we did not understand or see that we had this limitation on what we could use the barn for. Now that this issue has been raised, we recognize that, um, that we do have to, in order to get the protection of chapter forty-eight, section three, we have to do what chapter forty-eight, section three says, which is we have to use it for purposes. And by the way, not just, not just necessarily accessory purposes for the childcare facility. So, you know, we can't use it for something else. What the bylaw says is you can't have more than one use there. Uh, and so we understand that it's going to need to be related to the childcare facility. So, um, again, you know, we could debate this for another forty-five minutes and not get any evidence in front of you about these other issues. So I, I'm, I would like it if we could move on to either hearing from Mr. Glossa and/or Mr. Gillen.
So. Okay, okay. I, I just, I just want to appreciate the comments. Obviously, we're all focused on this. You about ready to wrap up?
Yes.
Yes. And we will give you an opportunity, sir, to respond, but let's do it in front of the mic. And I'm not sure whether we should, uh, let the public comments come first, or you want to make a, okay, so once you finish, we'll, we'll let you make a brief comment. Okay. If you get wrapped up, three, yes, thanks.
My observation is the barn is being used as a pond to contain the construction to the front of the property. Because the developer plans to, they, the developer wants to protect the back of the property for a future project, which he testified to in the land court trial. I believe if the developer wants to build a childcare center, the developer can, should build and design a single building to meet the daycare needs with the storage that it needs. It could be done in a single building and it can be easily set back on the property. You can set it back a hundred and seventy-five feet, which is between the one fifty and two hundred that I suggested. It could be a single building, ten thousand, twelve thousand.
So I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, sir, but that, this is a, uh, hearing of, of, of limited jurisdiction.
Understood.
So we all have different desires, but not sure that we can connect at, at this hearing level. So, so if you can just wrap, I don't mean to cut you off, sir, but I'm just trying to be, you know, clear in terms of what this board is empowered to do. And so what he might, what, what may happen in the future is, is something beyond the purview, but we can handle tonight. But go ahead, please.
My last comment is the barn is not required for the daycare. There's other options that the developer can pursue that would stay in character with the neighborhood and increase safety, particularly with the traffic in this high residential area. That's all I have. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So, Council, you want to come in just to brief a comment or if you can just quickly cut to the mic, please?
Yes. The issue at the time, when I was before the planning board hearing, was whether the barn could be used for storage for Needham Children's Center as well as for my client. That's what he originally wanted, was to be able to use it for himself in addition to the childcare facility. When it became such a hot-button issue, we agreed that it would be used only for the childcare facility, because that seemed to make a difference in terms of whether or not the planning board agreed that it would then have the protection of the Dover Amendment. I don't happen to agree with that, but we agreed that it would be used solely for the childcare facility for that reason. That's what I'm talking about. This individual was not at the trial, where, at least I don't believe he was, maybe he was. But I'm telling you that, that Pat Day testified about her storage needs and her intention to use this, the bond for storage. Mark Glusing, the architect, testified about the way the building was designed and the reason it was designed with minimal interior storage, because the barn was expected to be used for storage. So unless he's telling you that they're committing perjury, that's what the testimony was at trial.
I don't think there's any allegation.
Well, no, there's an allegation that the barn is not necessary and that my client is using it as a sham or whatever word he used. A pawn, I think, was the term he used, uh, and it's not actually needed for storage. I take grave exception to that. It's not what people testified to at trial under oath. And if you have any doubt about that, you can look at the factual findings in the court's decision, which is part of your package, where she talks explicitly about this subject.
So question, so in the building permit that issued, is there any mention about the use of the barn? I don't recall there was any.
I don't think there is.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you for clarifying that. And this, I think the point of all this is, is we're not going to personalize this. And thank you for your, your clarification. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else would like to testify? Please come forward. Just thank you. Good evening, good evening.
Good evening. So, um, my name is Nicole Hydeman. I live in, um, seventeen oh eight Central Avenue, the blue house that, um, Joe Brusey was demonstrating on his slides. Um, so I'm a direct neighbor, direct abutter, directly impacted by the project. You know, people around town, they talk about this project and it's always who lives in that house, meaning our house. Um, well, it's my family. It's actually my oldest.
So you, you were the house that was shown a few moments ago with the circular driveway?
Yeah.
Okay, media butter. Thank you.
Yeah. And, um, you know, I just want to put some, like, human face to what that house is. Um, it's my oldest son, Logan, our twins, Bella and Gray, and my husband, Matt, and I. Um, we moved to Needham ten years ago because we wanted to raise our children in a safe residential environment. We both worked very, very hard, um, to be able to save up for a down payment to live in Needham, Massachusetts. It was like a dream. And we did. And we bought our house and moved in and we fell in love with the neighborhood and the character and Matt's from Western Mass and it has a big backyard and that was, that was what we, you know, worked hard for, dreamed for, moved in. And we've lived there happily. So the reason why I'm sitting here now is because the character of our neighborhood that we bought into, that we invested in, that we put our life savings into, is now about to be completely overrun by a huge fifteen thousand square foot, you know, property, a commercial property. And, you know, I think that we have a number of issues that folks have raised and talked about. And, you know, I don't want to take people's time to kind of repeat what's already been said, but but, you know, I think that the, the character is going to be harmed. And I think everybody's sort of talking about, you know, well, we're going to put the lighting and we're going to, you know, make sure that we do this or that. But at the end of the day, everybody's going to walk away and go back to their everyday lives. And I have to live there. And I just feel like, you know, there's sort of these sentiments that, well, we're going to follow the plans. You know, of course, we're going to follow the plans. But, you know, we've heard that there was going to be preservation of mature trees that were at the property. And then the day after that the building permit was issued, um, about three to five mature trees were cut right down. And, you know, just to kind of give you an example of like an everyday life thing that I can share is that when I was getting ready for work this morning and I look into my mirror in my bathroom, a reflection kind of came back at me and it never stood out to me before, because it was always trees and grass and sky. And instead I was looking at a big kind of like construction zone in my mirror. And I think, you know, soon that's going to be a massive commercial building. I won't be able to look at the sky anymore for the trees or the grass in that mirror reflection. I'm going to be looking at a huge building with traffic. And, um, you know, my, I have three kids and as I said, and our bus stop is literally at our front door. It's at our house. Because it's not safe for them to walk around to the other bus stop around the corner. That's why our bus stop is our house. Because of the area, because of the way the neighborhood is, because of the traffic going down Central Avenue. So I'm sitting here thinking, well, like, what's going to happen when we get a daycare next door and we have traffic of hundreds of cars who are all stopped trying to come in and out? We're going to have angry people waiting, trying to get to work in the morning. And my little kids are standing outside waiting for their bus. Like, what's that going to be like? Is it just going to be of cars like piled up in front of my house? You know, and so I, I, I'm worried. I'm worried about their safety. I don't want them to be out there for that. Like, it's not what we bought into. That's not what we thought this was, you know, a neighborhood home. So, you know, I'm not going to sit here and tell everyone, oh, well, I think they should do this or that to make it better. Like, we've seen like some really good suggestions, I think. But it just seems like there's got to be a compromise here that we can find that meets everybody needs. There has to be. I, I really believe that there's a way to find a solution. And that's all what I think we, we want. Um, you know, we understand that this is privately owned property and that we can't, you know, just dictate what people do. But there should be some reasonable restrictions that take into consideration the character of our neighborhood and the people that live here and the children. I mean, there's children everywhere. So, you know, so there's that. And then I guess, you know, the other point that I would want to make and what it's most upsetting and most concerning to me is the environmental impact of this project. So, you know, as was already stated and our attorney described, you know, the, the potential, issues with the fertilizers and the oils that have been dumped there over the course of many years. You know, I know that there was potentially issues with even selling the property in the first place and, you know, that there was not any environmental testing permitted for potential buyers who were trying to buy the property. So it was bought without having done those environmental studies. You know, so, so I think, you know, this has been a huge concern for me all along. I'm honestly scared to death. I wonder, should I just, you know, do I have to move now? Like, I'm really worried, you know, and, and I was told, and this is secondhand, but I was told that, um, when this concern was raised, that dump trucks came with soil and bulldozers and churned the lot. And it was suspected that this was done to make testing more difficult. Um, I've been told that there were threats to call the police if there was testing done. And, you know, I think if everybody has the best interest of kids at hand here, and if that's what everybody's truly after as a, as an end result, like, why not just do the test? Like, I just really have trouble understanding if they're taking these efforts in case the test reveals that there was an issue. Why not actually just do the test and figure out what we're dealing with? Like, why are we playing, why are we doing like guesswork here? It just doesn't seem worth it. Um, you know, these are our kids, our neighbors' kids, our swing sets are right up against that line. Like, this is where our kids play. And even if they put, you know, remediation materials where the playground's going to be at the daycare, let's say, like, what about what's coming up in the dirt now? Like, we have to, like, breathe in all this. You know, how do we know that all the construction that's going on today before the daycare is there is even safe? I don't feel confident, so.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I appreciate your thoughts and obviously you're, you're a media fighter and you, you've got deep, deep concerns.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, who else would like to speak, sir?
Hi, I'm Rob Maysey. I'm a twenty-three-year resident of Needham. I live diagonally across from the property at sixteen eighty-one Central Avenue. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here and also want to thank you for your public service. I know this is not easy. Um, I have, I'm not going to rehash everything that's been said. Uh, according to Mr. Huber, apparently the Dover Amendment affords more protection than diplomatic immunity. So, uh, that's a bit of a concern, because everything seemed to tie back to the Dover Amendment. They don't have to comply with virtually any particular rule or regulation. My biggest concern to public safety, living diagonally across the street from it, I will not be able to leave my house in the morning. There's no question about that. Traffic on Central is bad enough as it is. I'll be at the mercy of the kindness of strangers coming from two different directions on their way to work. So there is probably going to be a guaranteed accident or two on Central Avenue as a result of this particular project and the traffic that will entail. The lighting is a big concern. I'd like to have some attachments to the building permit that restrict that. Currently, we have Times Square over there with the, uh, the temple as it is. That's probably violating a lot of the bylaws resulting with the lumens and, and whatnot. And then last but not least, I've heard that they're going to have a septic in lieu of a sewer, which, when you consider some of the environmental concerns that have been raised, I'm not sure how a leach field works, but that doesn't sound good to me. So I appreciate your time.
Okay, well, thank you for expressing those concerns, sir. Thank you. Anyone else, please? Please.
Hi, I'm Kristy Thompson. I live at fifty Windsor Road, um, concerned resident, member of the neighborhood, and also a researcher in the field of environmental toxicology. So I've been so for twenty years. Um, so I have a really passionate interest and I'm aware and have an appreciation for the harm that can happen. And since day one, when I saw the property, even before any of this started, I always thought even the house that was on there, I thought something should be done. So, um, so we've all heard about it and probably know about in the past, uh, in the news about cognitive damage and developmental delays due to lead, for instance. Um, but we even know less about the effects of other toxins, especially the harm they can do. Or at the beginning, understand how epigenetics works, where I'm exposed and my DNA gets altered by environmental toxins. And I pass that down to my kids and they pass it down to their kids. Really don't have a grasp of what's happening. Um, you know, a clear grasp. So I'll just leave it at that. But we kind of running by, if we don't look for it, we don't see it, then it's not there. And we've been told that there's no evidence, but the neighbors did the research. Neighbors went and did exactly what is recommended in the planning guide of where to choose and safe places for early care education. We provided this to the Board Health Meeting and to daycare.
This is a report that was generated by, by, by who?
No, it is a recommendation of how, if you're going to build a daycare center, how you should look into the past history of the site. And in that, it tells us that we should look at the geographical information mapping database, which we did. And we looked from nineteen ninety-nine up through two thousand and nineteen. And we found aerial views that show all these things that are proposed to maybe be there to be there. So we had that and we shared that.
So is this material that you can leave behind with the board?
Yes. And then here are highlighted, I'm sorry, I didn't have an adequate staper, but I've highlighted some of the pages as well. And so we, and in that database, we found evidence of the various structures of the high-risk uses listed as potential concerns for source of contamination, auto repair, junkyard, deteriorating paint, um, storage containers and landfill. Those are all the things we've seen here and all the things listed, um, here and seen in the sky.
I'm sorry, sorry, I need to interrupt. But so in other words, when you say see, how is it you're seeing tho- those items you mentioned, those contaminants? You've got a visual picture?
Contaminants, but you can see what's listed here as sources for those contaminants are those structures are present here. So you can see barrels, you can see automotive equipment, old cars, rusted out cars. You can see trees that are here from the previous, um, I don't quite know what that was about, to be honest, but it's just, um, years and years.
Materials that you've accumulated, or you've gotten some, some, some public source?
Yes, it's from, it's called a, uh, it's a national database that anyone can search, any property and look at the history of the property over the years. And it's called the Geographical Information Mapping Database, GIS. And it's what, um, you know, environmental surveys will also use that. It's kind of the first source to go to, to learn about the history of the site. And so again, you can go on mass.gov and through the link through the Environmental Epidemiology Program and the Department of Public Health, they post this planning guide there. And they recommend, the goal of the planning guide is that, um, parents, planning boards, zoning boards, everybody can be on board and be educated. And so, and there's even an online form that if, um, individuals, specific individuals involved, we couldn't do it. They can fill that out and Massachusetts Department of Public Health will also do this research. So I just want to say that right now, uh, no one with the power to help has helped us. And the soil, as mentioned, if you go by now, has been overturned. They're doing active things. You can't see exactly what's been done in, done on the entirety of the property. I don't know how capping would work right now, which was mentioned. Uh, and that's not my, I'm not an expert in how you go about, uh, capping things. Um, but that is what, this is the process where you start to look at that and figure out what you want to do. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. As you go, the materials behind, thank you. Anyone else like to hear this?
Hi, good evening. My name is Holly Clark. I live at 1652 Central Avenue, which is, I'm the abutter to the butter. I'm right next to Temple Aliyah. Um, and I too want to thank you for your, your time and your attention and the reading you'll be doing. So, um, I've lived here for 28 years, uh, with my family. This is where we raised our children. This is where we had all of our family events. This is where I garden. And, um, I am right next to Temple Aliyah. I understand you can be a good neighbor with an institutional use. You can. It is possible. But when the planning board issued its decision, it considered these things. That is true. And I think it's really good guidance, um, for, for your board in terms of determining, you know, why would we say as a town, we're going to allow institutional uses in a residential district, but only in one building? Um, that's what we did. And that applies to any kind of institutional building.
I'm sorry, who's the we?
In, in Needham, when we passed our bylaw, which to me is like a covenant between all of us, this is how we're going to live. So section 3.2.
You're challenging the accessory use of the barn?
I'm going to talk about the barn. Yes. Okay. So 3.2.1 says one non-residential building in a residential area. And it seems to me logically, wha- what that's doing is saying we're, we're going to pit, permit some non-residential uses here, but we understand that there could be some negative impacts to them. And so one of the, the regulations our town has put on is just said one building. When I read the Dover Amendment, it says you can regulate bulk. And it seems to me, and, and building coverage. And one building seems to me to be building coverage. It seems to me to be bulk. And it also does seem to me to be open space as well. So, once, that's a legitimate bylaw. So then the next part of the test says, okay, when you apply it here to this instance, is it reasonable or not? And you look at, does it impact the, the childcare use? And then you weigh that against the importance of the municipal interest. It isn't just, you say daycare and everything goes away. So, so here, whatever the land court did, the reasoning of the planning board is for you to consider. And it's, and it noted how important the character of the neighborhood is. And it noted how this doesn't change, um, the ability to have a childcare.
But unfortunately, the, the land court spoke and struck voided
Right.
Uh, the, 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 the planning board's site review. So we have to deal with that as a, as a, as a, yeah.
Yes, but this is, uh, the land court did not discuss section 3.2.1. There was no discussion or debate about the application of the barn i- in that, in that decision. It, because it's not under site plan review. It's separate. So what the land court decision was doing was saying, you did a special permit. I'm not going to let you do special permit and you can't do anything that has discretion. So when you look at 3.2.1, it is not special permit. And, and frankly, there's no discretion. It says you can only have one building. It's very clear. And then when you weigh it in terms of here, when you look at the different iterations of this project, the design review board really did get told the barn isn't going to have anything to do with the childcare center. And if it was going to be used for some storage, um, one of the things the planning board said is, you know, you could redesign, redesign that one building you're allowed to have. Just make it bigger. You can have your storage. It's in one building and it's.
Would, if, if the developer or some other changes plan to connect the two structures with that alleviate this concern?
You could. You could. It would be one building.
It's a pretty large lot.
It would be a large lot.
By connecting the two, would that alleviate your concern?
It depends on what you connected, right? If you ended up with, you know, you would just have a whole new plan to look at. That, that's what I'm saying. It, but the way the plan is now, it's asking for two buildings. And the way the bylaw is, you can't. Could there be an accommodation? And the point of it is, um, it ends up creating a density on the property that is out of character with everything. What I will look at out, my house now, I will see the driveway. I will see the cars coming in and out all day long. I will deal with, like, I see the, the, the safety bylaw that says you can control the access point, the ingress and egress. That seems to me you can address, um, the traffic concerns because it is the cars that will be going to that point, that ingress point will be causing the backups on the road. For me, when I try to come out of my driveway in the morning, the northbound traffic that's going like toward west, toward the Pike is very hard to get through. Often I will try to get through that and then go left and going south is generally more open in the morning so that I can then get around to get to South Street to get into town, if that makes sense. So I take a circle. When the daycare comes, I won't be able to do that because the cars will be lined up, having to cro- take a left across traffic.
Have you reviewed these traffic studies? Apparently there's a peer review. Have you looked at those reports?
I did.
Has it dealt with, with what you described?
It talked about that, yes. And it recommended mitigations. And before the developer agreed he would do that. He said he would, they would check the timing of the light at Charles River and Central. They said they would post a detail officer at the mouth of the driveway, at least for some period of time. What the planning board said is after you've been open for four weeks, you could come back and we can see if this is working. They said after it's open, do a follow-up traffic study to see if it's working. And the other P, so that was all in the, um, the peer review traffic plan. And that was agreed to. And the other thing that was agreed to was that there would be a cap on the number of children at 115. And that is important for parking and for traffic. Because if the position is you're not allowed to regulate the number of children, well, that would mean all the planning would be for naught. And so, so, um, and I will say, even during, um, while this was all going on, there were four accidents, I believe, between Pine Street and Charles River. And that includes during COVID, right? So traffic was down. It's, it, it is a narrow road and it just, it's very heavy traffic. And it happens. So adding 500 more trips per day, and it's estimated to be 115 trips during rush hour, which normally under the ITE would say you'd need a turn-in lane, but there's no room for it. So the modifications were these recommendations that the developer did agree to during the, the process, then decided to appeal and did it. I, I, and I, I just want to say, I hear the landscaping, that is very, very important. And it, it just doesn't make any sense. Like landscaping and lighting are issues that mitigate bulk. I think that's the disconnect. It's not that the.
Sure, sure. But, but apparently there's been testimony that there is a landscape plan submitted.
It wasn't, it's, it's not with the building permit. There was a landscape plan submitted to the design review board. That, that is true. It just isn't clear. Is that going to have any force? I mean, I, I heard Mr. Huber say that they're going to do it and I appreciate that.
I thought you said that there was a plan and, and, but, but is that not true? There's no.
There wa- there was a plan. There was, no, what I'm saying, there was a plan presented to the design review board. Tonight is the first time I heard that they will follow that plan. Does that make sense?
Sure, sure. The, a plan, you, you want to have significance, but that it be adhered to.
Right.
And the developer, the council indicated that that would be the case. Okay. Well, good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Just, the last thing I wanted to say is when we were talking about parking, one of the things that the planning board did was say the building has to go back and they talked about safety. And one of the things they also wanted was to have a longer driveway so that it would be sure that there'd be enough room for the cars to get onto the lot. I mean, I, I would hope we would all agree that, um, you know, wherever the building gets built, i- if, if there's a problem with the traffic, the building isn't going to be moved at that point. So, but that was the point, was to have a longer driveway so the cars would get off, off Central Avenue.
To minimize traffic. Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments, please? Uh, sir?
I take you in advance for your time. Good evening. My name is Greg Darish. I live at 34 Countryway and I'm an abutter and one of the many unfortunate victims of the project at 1688 Central Avenue. We moved to Needham 15 years ago because we wanted to raise our children in a safe residential environment. We fell in love with the character of the Countryway neighborhood. It is so distressing to us that a developer now seeks to destroy both the character of the neighborhood, but far more significantly, he seeks to destroy the safety of this neighborhood. I'm a father of three young children. Our family, along with so many other families, have been very patient through this long process, wanting to believe that the developer would be a man of his word. We listened intently as he convinced the Needham Planning Board that he was committed to working with the neighbors to maintain the character of the neighborhood, that he was committed to minimizing the impact on traffic, that he was committed to environmental safety, and that he was committed to the safety of our children. We believed him and so did the planning board. That's why the planning board, much to our dismay, accepted the developer at his word and his promises and did not impose the protections that we, the neighbors, so desperately demanded. In fact, the planning board conceded on the majority of what the developer asked for. As a result of that, we were forced to incur the significant expense of hiring our own attorney. Because the attorney representing the planning board, this was referenced earlier, went on the record, in trial, and explained to the judge, to be clear, Judge, I do not represent the abutters. He said multiple times, I need to make this clear. I am not representing the abutters. I am not representing their interests. The judge assured us that if our interests were not protected, we would have the opportunity through hearings such as this to plead our case. So here we are, begging you to please understand our plight. This project is dangerous for the children and family of the Countryway neighborhood. The traffic studies have made this crystal clear. It's been talked about. I'm not going to repeat that. What's most upsetting and concerning is the environmental hazard. Please allow me to explain. It is well-known and well-documented that 1688 has been an environmental hazard for decades. That lot was used as an illegal race car repair shop for many years, littered with rustic, rusted out oil drums.
Sure, I, I don't mean to, in other words, I think what we're trying to do is it gets later now, 10:15. But that has, that point has been made and it's certainly been noted for the record. So I don't mean to rush you, but are there other points you've got there, sir?
I want to know why, I'm, I'll rephrase that. We brought these concerns. There was a hearing with the, with the town, it's the Public Health Board of Health. The abutters presented all of the evidence. And the developer presented his evidence. The Board of Health was horrified by what they saw. The Board of Health said, this is clearly a risk to the children, the neighbors and to the potential children of the daycare center. They reviewed that, the doctors, the experts, and they said environmental testing must be a condition of a building permit. I want to know why suddenly that doesn't matter. I want to know who's looking out for these children. If God forbid, something happens and my kids get sick, the Hydeman's gets si- kids get sick or the, the children at this daycare center, who don't we all have a responsibility to look after? Who are we going to go to to ask for apology? You all now know about it. You've known about it for a while. And I want to know who's going to give us an apology? And what the Board of Health said is a concern of theirs proves to be a reality.
So was this the, the, there was some discussion in, in 21, the Board of, 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 the Board of Health had indicated, uh, some concern about this?
They sure did. And they made this recommendation.
Was it in 21?
Sounds about right.
Okay, okay. It's a, it's an important concern.
Okay.
You, you understand that we're here to determine whether or not a building permit was issued in conformance with zoning? Just, just yes or no?
No.
Okay, then you're proceeding from a basic misunderstanding.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So I think you've said your piece.
No, I haven't.
Please wrap it up.
To think that that's even their attitude when we talk about the health of these children
There are other agencies that can deal with it. That's not our jurisdiction.
All right. I don't want to make this an argument. I'll wrap it up by saying, well, this entire process, the developer with the relationships that he's established in this town has masterfully figured out, I'm not finished. Has masterfully figured out the way to navigate. So each department says, it's not quite our responsi- that's their responsibility. We go there, that's their responsibility. And the loopholes have been frustrating.
Has anyone ever contacted DEP? Has anyone ever asked the Board of Health to contact DEP? Why don't you talk with DEP? That's not our jurisdiction.
I'm just letting you know, I'm speaking, I'm going on record. You're aware of it. You're aware of it. And what I don't understand, okay, the, and I'm almost done, but I'm going to put a couple of points that haven't been put out there yet. When this property went for sale, all right? Three acre beautiful wooded lot in the Countryway neighborhood. One of the lots that abut this lot just recently sold for $2.5 million for one acre. All right? One of the abutting lots. This is three acres, right? This land has got to be valued at six to eight million dollars. It was so, when it went up for sale, there was a long list of potential buyers. But they were also concerned about the contamination and the seller said, I'm not allowing anyone to test it. No surprise, all right? This lot sold for $1.2 million, like 20% of the market value, all right? I would suggest that the seller was happy to take whatever he was able to get, knowing that this was not going to be a develop, a, a lot that could be developed. And the developer who bought it rolled the dice, hoping that Mr. Friedenberg and Mr. Goldman and the rest of the town would say, well, it's not my, it's not my responsibility. Did you ask this department? Use that department? And this prospect would roll right along and nobody would say, have the guts to say, someone for God's sake needs to test this property. It's not that hard. Everyone is coming up with excuses to why you can't test the property.
So, so listen, I, I, I appreciate your concern and I hear your, your deep concerns and I understand your, your, your father of children. So it's all mine. So I think we have your points. It is getting late. You know, we're trying to, to get, get through this night, tonight to allow the people to speak. I think the point is that, that all of us should know, including us as members of this board. We're a board of limited jurisdiction, which isn't to say this point is not important. It is very important. But there's been a suggestion that the D E P federal agency or the mass D E P or combination of both. Um, you know, perhaps this is the time now to get them involved directly.
We've tried it. What I'm asking you tonight is I plead with you. To please suspend this building permit while every morning plumes of dust from this site. Are covering my children's playset, my front yard, my front steps with God knows what contaminants. Please, please suspend this permit. Well, to give us time to be able to do the necessary research. Just some limited testing. It won't even take that long. Please suspend this permit so that we can test and make sure that everybody's safe.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Okay, it's getting close to ten thirty. It is a work night. Uh, how many more people would like to comment tonight? One? Anyone else? Okay, okay. So, so, uh, and how many folks are out there that would like to say, uh, comment and testify? So we have, so one here and one, one online?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's get through it. If you don't mind coming forward, please. Thank you.
See you, mom.
Well, this.
You're going to go to room.
Do the live testimony first and there's one person who will try and get in through Zoom. Good evening.
My name is Margaret Abruzzi. I live at thirty Bridle Trail, which is around the corner from this.
In relation to the other Bruzy?
I am his, his wife, yes. Um, uh, I wanted to make a couple of points. Uh, the first point being just on the face of this plan. No building permit should have issued. It doesn't tell you what all the buildings are going to be used for. How can you make an assessment? That the use of those buildings is lawful if it's not written on the plan what the use will be. The second thing I wanted to, to tell you. Is that, um, and I brought copies of the transcript of the court hearing. Where the um, judge talked about. What exactly her judgment meant and what it did not mean. She.
So you're, you're pointing to, is that the court's decision?
This, no, this is the, so the, the court issued its decision. And then it wanted to have a status conference before it issued the judgment. And the purpose of the status conference was this, she wanted to make sure. That we all kind of understood what she meant in that decision. And what she meant. Was that the, the, all the dimensional regulations were met. Sorry, thank you. Uh, that all the dimensional regulations were met. Mr. Huber asked that the judgment say that the applicant is entitled to a building permit. And she refused to do that. She, she said, no, he's entitled to apply for a building permit. But the building commissioner. May have other things that they're supposed to look for. In a building application and I don't have any intention of interfering with that.
Can you direct us to a particular page on this?
Sure, uh, page seven.
Okay.
Uh. Is, is where she says, uh, if there's anything else that the commissioner needs to consider in determining whether a building permit. You know, application should be approved. I'm not interfering with that at all. Um, I don't, oh, well, actually I do have the full transcript in front of me. Um. So on page four is where Attorney Huber asks that the judgment say. That Needham Enterprises is entitled to the issuance of a building permit. And, uh, on. Well, what I read you indicates that she said, uh, no, uh, and then. Um. Then on page eight. Uh, Mr. Huber said, well, you're nulling the whole decision and there's a lot of things in there that aren't. About dimensional requirements. I'd like the judgments to say. That the building commissioner can't put any of those conditions on the building permit. And the judge said, that's not the case before me. The building commissioner can do what the building commissioner needs to do. And if you feel that the conditions do not meet the Dover amendment. Then you appeal. That's the process. So. People, it, it has been suggested that this court ruling. Meant that nothing can be done. And that's not what the judge meant. And that this, if you read this transcript, you will see that very clearly.
This, this, this applying this analysis. That you would conclude that the building commissioner, although he had an opportunity to add conditions, as you know, he did not.
Correct.
And, and so that's why you're here to support the, uh, the, the overturning of, of the building permit.
That's right, because on its face.
Suggesting that he, he might have included some restrictions. Uh, uh, that were not included.
That's right. To deal with many of the concerns that the planning board sussed out and spoke of in detail in their decision. And the judge said. It would be okay for the building commissioner to impose conditions that were in the, the site plan review. And.
Okay, well.
That would be subject to the Dover amendment.
Very helpful. I, I appreciate you highlighting the relevant pages, but we'll take a look at this offline. Okay.
Wonderful. Um, the, uh, next thing I wanted to move on to is, uh, the stormwater plan. Um. Needham has requirements for stormwater plans. This is what a typical stormwater plan looks like. It's lots of pages. It has a narrative and a summary. It has a construction period plan. It has a plan for operation and maintenance. It has a long term pollution plan. Uh, it has worksheets and calculations. It has drainage inspection forms, recharge calculations, drawn down calculations. Existing conditions hydro pad. I'll admit, I don't know what that is and proposed conditions hydro pad. There's a lot that goes into a, um, storm water and erosion control plan and, uh.
So you feel that despite the, the approvals by the Department of Health, perhaps, I forget, or the engineering. Uh, that, that they aired in their review. I, I don't know what, what exactly they looked at. You only have two sheets of paper.
Yes, one is an erosion plan and one is a stormwater plan. And I suggest to you that you don't need an engineer to tell you. That these do not meet the requirements of the Needham bylaw. And following that bylaw is not precluded by this court decision. Uh, a couple of.
I think.
Yeah, I, does anyone have a tissue? Sorry. Thank you so much.
You can take a minute just to.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Okay. Um. The traffic and environmental concerns are health and safety concerns. They're not dimensional regulations. The zoning bylaws are meant to protect the health and safety of the residents of Needham. And so I suggest you that, uh, traffic mitigations and environmental. Making sure that the property is environmentally safe. Are health and safety regulations that should be included, uh, in any permitting of this project. Uh, um, uh, the, um, the, excuse me, the permit holder, uh. Wanted to suggest that, um. Uh. The barn i- is governed by. Other cases that talk about uses and, um, uh. Governing the use, whether a childcare center can be there at all. Uh, is very different than. Governing the configuration. Of the structures on the land and how much open space there should be and how much bulk. Having two large buildings makes it a childcare complex, which is all the more of a, um. Changing the character of the neighborhood to be prominently commercial as opposed to residential. Um, the review by the departments, uh, that you see in there, you will know, if you looked back at the planning board materials, which are voluminous. You will note that the concerns that were expressed to the planning board are not expressed in these. Notes to the building commissioner. And I suggest that may have something to do with the fact. That town council has interpreted this decision to say that no regulation can happen of, of this project because of.
Well, I, I'm not sure that the, the town council has said that. I mean, I think we all understand that, that there are clear exceptions for regulation. As has been talked about size, lot areas, setbacks, open space and parking and so on. So. So we definitely have not, you know, there's been no ruling that, that these other conditions don't apply. And that's clearly what. Why we're deliberating and hearing, uh, uh, people like yourself have deep concerns.
Certainly. So last point I just want to make is that the, um, Department of Health, uh. Letter that you read said it has no further comments. That suggests to me that the comments that it made during the planning board process. Were still their concerns. And in fact, the board of health is discussing this case tomorrow because they still have a lot of concerns about this property. So I, I think it's important to look at what the board of health has said throughout the process.
Well, I may suggest if you're engaging with the board of health at a hearing tomorrow. You know, you should surely express these concerns and if they want to supplement. What they've written, there's some confusion. You say no further comments. It, it maybe isn't so clear to us. I was sitting here on the board without. Your vast knowledge of the trial and so on, that they clarify their position with that meant. And be more exacting as to the concerns that the board of health does have. That, that would be helpful.
Okay, I will be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments in this room tonight? And there's one comment. Oops. No, we can't get them. Okay. Hi, Daphne, we're just talking about you. So apparently there's one person who has a hand up on the Zoom. And I think, I think all we're going to do is, is take this one more comment tonight. It, it is getting late and, and I know that the board has issues. They want to digest this as well. So I would say, uh, most likely guys, we're, we're going to break after this. Testimony, uh, and reconvene at the next meeting on December fourteenth. And we do appreciate all the concerns. That we're hearing, uh, and, and we, we certainly need the time, thought to, to review all those. So Daphne, if you can help us bring the, the person in, please, who has their hand up.
From the promote Pat's panel. To promote you to the panel with Pat?
You still there?
No, still not.
Hi, Pat, can you hear us?
No, I've got, go ahead. You know, like she could have left it on.
She may have gone to sleep.
No, wait, declined. She declined to be.
Okay, okay, okay. So, so this, I, there's been tremendous interest on both sides by the developer. Defending this by the building commissioner, uh, who is, is obviously standing by his position by council, by all of you here tonight. So. Um, at, at this point, it is getting late. Uh, it is a work night and there's a lot of material to, to, uh, to absorb. So I would entertain a motion to continue.
I would move that we continue to. December fourteenth.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, so I, I, I support that as well.
On the, at eight P, uh, eight P M, uh, the fourteen at eight P M in this room.
Right, so.
Be also, it will also be, um, hybrid.
Excellent. So there is a, a something at seven thirty. So it's going to be December fourteenth at eight o'clock. Thank you all so much. We'll see you next month. Thank you so much.
Well, you want mine? You want a copy of it? We can just email it.